Order at seven oh two this town council hybrid budget meeting. With item two, consideration of the damage proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. Starting with A planning and community.
Recording in progress.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Um, wait for Mike to get our shared screen up here. All right. So tonight we're going over many town services to include public health, planning and development, engineering services, and then a lot of the supportive commissions inland wetlands, planning zoning, conservation commission agriculture, ZBA and design advisors. If you look, let's start with engineering. That would be, as we all know, Chuck assigned to C H A. His budget is increased by forty dollars as compared to last year. Slight increase, yes, but again, we've talked about the ability or lack thereof to hire our own. And the bargain that comes with having an entire firm behind somebody as opposed to all the additional software and expertise consultations in the background that we'd need to get if we did hire our own engineer. That number sits at seventy six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, seventy five thousand, of which is his professional services. Eight hundred and ninety is for the plotter service contract that we use here. Everything else is flat. Moving on to building inspections.
Oh, I'm. Yeah, no, we could take, we can take a break at each section. So one trip comment, Brian, just reflecting on a lot of the other presentations from departments. And I know Chuck, or at least for the engineering department, they have assigned positions, but they don't list out any performance data. And I think that would be good for us to know to kind of quantify how much the engineer does for the talent account, how many reports, how many studies, how many surveys.
Does that exist now? Like we, I didn't deliver that to you, or is that something I would need to have to?
It might be something you need to institute. I have to look at past, but they don't have any other counselor to know, but I just know it's a trend that, uh, I don't, you're saying it's in the actual budget. There's no performance data.
Yeah, at least from the pre-serv from the budget book.
Yeah, no, we have to add that in. I mean, that's not that hard to do, but.
I think it'd be good just to keep it consistent with all the other departments that, uh, performance metrics. Cause it puts value to what.
I'm gonna guess the firm provides a pretty substantial list. I'm happy to share that.
Yeah, yeah, probably a lot of it, so they're filling.
You know, it's just what they're working on.
Yeah, and like they have a trend history of how many, you know, every time you send them over like field studies or, you know, the firehouses, how much they've done on an annual basis over the past few years. Like it, all right. Any other questions? Councilmember?
Do we know what, uh, the actual charge for professional services is this fiscal year to date?
Where are we in regards to the seventy five thousand?
Yeah.
Lisa, do you have that? Do you happen to have that off the top of your head there? I know we were getting pretty close.
Uh, no, I don't, but I know we had some pretty big projects that came on that we had to move forward with. I think the town green was one of them.
We're in the, we are currently in the, we better ask.
Yeah, I mean, we could get that number, but I don't have it. The, the only number that would be there is, um, well, it's not in this particular one, in the estimated actuals, but that, yeah, that's not gonna tell you where we are today. But it's a good chunk. I, I have to look it up and get it back to you.
No, no, I, understanding that it's a good chunk.
Yeah, I just.
Enough for, for my purposes. Thank you. And is this proposed budget sufficient for the department to meet its goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty four?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Is he working on, uh, how will you, how will you, or is he working on the job?
I, I think it's by job. Like if we, let's say, we want to engineer the town green, a good example. Uh, we reach out to Chuck and say, can you put together a cost estimate on how long it would be now? Does he factor in his hours probably in there, but he gives us a bill for the entire, what the, what the project will cost for him to draw it out? Oh, okay.
We're good to go to the inspections?
All right, I'm building and inspection services. Administrator, they, their jobs are to administer and enforce Connecticut State Building Code and its amendments, provide staff support to the historic commission, the Blake Commission, uh, and they're the, our, our building inspector, the, um, Blight Enforcement Officer. And it was. Budget for this year, one hundred and fifty one thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, an increase of thirteen, four, fifty five, nine points to increase. That is entirely payroll. Everything else within the budget is flat. Moving on, uh, through the budget.
Um, oh, I think I have questions. It's the council.
Well, can I run, can I run down through the budget, his budget?
Just that one, right?
There was a whole bunch of line items that I just want to hit off. I might answer, but go ahead.
No, go ahead. Wait, are we on inspection though?
Yes. Yep.
All right. Yeah. I thought we just had the one increase, though.
Yeah, just one increase. I think Brian is gonna offer any questions on any other of the.
All right. So you see the, the payroll expenses at just over one forty, the three hundred dollars for professional services. Uh, that is for mostly for martial services. Each martial service, I believe, is around seventy five uh, to a hundred. Sometimes at light, they have to serve, uh, do martial service. Um, sometimes when a business is given a thirty day closure, they have to do a martial service. Uh, that, that sort of, um, that, that's what that three hundred dollars is for. The six sixty, uh, is for cellphone communications out of that office. The nine thousand dollars is the annual licensing fee for the online permitting, uh, system that we have that is a flat nine thousand. It's cheaper than previous years as Jim was able to negotiate it down. The two hundred dollars printing is for business cards and inspections tickets. Quite often our building inspectors have to lead that kind of business, uh, with the people they are dealing with. Uh, the two ninety, uh, for dues and memberships, um, is required for two, two, uh, associations they belong to. Uh, basically the, the code councils that they belong to. The training and development is there's a fifty dollars occasional training, a webinar, um, something along those lines. You see there was none in, in, uh, during COVID, hence the fifty dollar, uh, increase. Um, office supplies, uh, you can see remained flat. Uh, minor tools remain flat. That is essentially, uh, shovelless tape measures as discussed today for a current business issue, a light meter uh, that we may need as they already do have, um, a sound meter and books and subscriptions, five hundred dollars. That is a code book for the ICC uh, codes, and that is, uh, required. I'm ready to take any questions.
All right, that was Councilman Nucci, followed by Councilman Murray.
Um, thank you. I'm just, uh, wondering, we haven't changed the headcount there. Have we annulized anybody? Why is the payroll, uh, increase so high?
Lisa? Or Mike?
Sorry. Might have, uh, that would increase the, uh, the percentage increase for the building inspector. That was within the town manager's authorization last year. And also there is a clerk, uh, a technician, I think her title is, and she's part of the union, which would have had that six percent piece in there. So it includes the, uh, building inspector, non-affiliated raise, and the clerk for the two, you know, union adjustments.
Okay.
Councilmember.
Amy had my, so thank you.
I'm sure you got one.
Actually, it's just, is this proposed budget sufficient for the department to meet goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty four?
I, I plan and hope so, yes.
Yeah, um, thank you for the question, Mr. Polly, if I may. Yes, absolutely. This, this budget is, um, fully thought out and it will be all of our requirements.
Thank you.
Great, go ahead, Jim. Are there any other questions to councilmembers? All right, seeing that, we'll move on to planning and development.
All right, planning and development, two hundred and thirteen thousand and twenty six dollars, an increase of four thousand, four hundred and thirty eight dollars. Uh, this is entirely negotiated raises and, uh, non-union staff raises. Uh, the budget decreased, uh, by one hundred and fifty dollars, uh, due to a drop in office supplies. Running through the line items within, um, it's for three staff, uh, that is, uh, that is including Dave, uh, Mike, uh, Tomato and Cassie in that office for the payroll. Um, the cellphone is the five hundred sixteen reflects the cellphone, the two hundred and seventy five reflects the required, um, testing on the sound meter. Um, there was the zero printing fee there. Dues and memberships, it's Dave's A I C P and Casio, C A Z E O. That was the once, the one thousand sixty five is for those two memberships. Training and development, um, remains Dave. Dave obviously has a lot of training that he has to attend. It was low in twenty and twenty one, uh, due to COVID. The travel reimbursements, again, low during COVID. That is for conferences or training that Dave needs to attend. Uh, office supplies remains flat. Uh, commuter software, that is entirely the, uh, G I S mapping software at one thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars and a hundred fruit and pictures to be needed for the office. Any questions?
I guess. That price for G I S software is phenomenal. Well, that's awesome. Um, I, I just wanted to note in program accomplishments. Um, it was great to see that, uh, this department is improving user friendliness for forms and applications. I know uh, this department has taken feedback on that quite well, uh, through their interactions with planning and zoning, zoning board of appeals. And thank you for, uh, those efforts. And then is this proposed budget sufficient for the department to meet its goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty four?
I believe so. Dave, would you like to respond if you're on?
Yep, yeah, I, I would agree. Uh, we, we should be all set with, with this budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we can write along to public health services, the Eastern Island Health District.
Budget this year, eighty four thousand, three hundred and thirty eight dollars, a reduction of seven ninety two. That is formula based out of Eastern Islands. That includes Holly and all the services from Eastern Island, uh, Health District. Questions?
Councilmember?
Yeah, the, the performance measures here, Steve, I think that's what, uh, you were, you had in mind for the engineering services.
Yeah.
Just, you know, for fun, just it's in here for Eastern Highlands.
Oh, God.
And I think that's what he was.
Yeah, it's another example.
That was an example. Uh, my question is, is this budget sufficient for the department to meet program goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty four?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right. That brings us to planning and development commissions, including inland wetlands and U C C. Let me tell you.
Okay, um, the inland was wetlands budget is thirty five hundred or three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, an increase of fifty bucks. Uh, that bump is for statutory requirement for training of new members. Uh, the planning and zoning, uh, eight thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars, an increase of fifty dollars, um, same as above fifty dollars, uh, required for new members. Uh, any questions?
Actually, I apologize. It also includes N B A, after a session, agriculture, or probably at least two of the other commissions.
Okay, yeah, and, and again, for Z B A, also the fifty dollars for new members. Conservation Commission, uh, remains flat and agricultural, uh, commission remains flat.
Councilmember? Okay, Councilmember?
A small amount, but we've never spent that, that much on training, like historically. So I don't even think we worked on, unless there's something, I don't know if you're, if I'm wrong, go for it, but I think we spent like sixty dollars on training on the average year, so probably.
I believe that's a new statutory change. It would sound like an unfunded mandate, Dave. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, that's correct. So, so, uh, land use commissioners effective at the beginning of this year have to receive, uh, by statute, uh, uh, four hours of training, uh, an hour, I think, has to be on affordable housing, uh, and, and we have to be able to document that. It, it's possible we may not need the extra fifty bucks. Uh, we sort of took that from the, uh, the reduction in office supplies and, and shifted it around. Uh, so, so we'll see next year, you know, if there's nominal trainings we need to pay for. This gives us a little bit of extra flexibility. If it turns out we don't need it, then, then we won't ask for it next year.
Is that, um, is that gonna cover all the training? Cause isn't the P Z T specifically pretty specific?
It's fairly specific. I would say the, uh, early signs are that, that this should be sufficient. If not, I, I, I believe we probably will have enough money within the, the broader planning and development services budget to cover any, any overruns, so.
Um, yeah. Same training is being applied to inlands and wetlands. I, I can see Z B A, but, um, inlands and wetlands.
Inland wetlands has a slightly different, uh, protocol, but, but, but still, we, yeah, we would anticipate the same, uh, possible need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Um, so for our inland wetlands, P Z C and Z B A, is the temporary help line the recording clerk?
That is correct.
Yeah, and, um, this is more a policy type consideration, Brian. We touched on this briefly on Thursday night. But, um, with the technology of Zoom, being able to report hybrid meetings and then the closed captioning provided within Zoom or the ability to transcribe, um, could, is this something we can look into going forward? Probably not for this budget, but, uh, whether we need to have a reporting clerk for all of these commissions. Or would a transcription service along with the Zoom reporting be sufficient?
Uh, while I'm writing, yes, I'll look into that. Um, I'm just trying to write, so I remember it tomorrow. As to why.
Sure.
And the illegality of what we need through the clerk and such, but.
Yeah, I know. For P Z C and Z B A, there are, you know, public care requirements, so I don't know how it works, but it seems like it's something we could at least look into.
Kathy.
Yep, and then, um, so for inland wetlands, is this proposed budget sufficient for that department to meet its program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty four?
Yeah, the advertising is eight hundred for legal notices. The dues and memberships again is for their, their membership to C I W O, and I believe, yes, it is.
Okay. Um, planning and zoning, again, I wanted to point out that, uh, one of the program accomplishments included streamlining application process and operations to improve customer service. And I wanted to, um, give a shout out. Thank you for that. I think, again, um, there have been a lot of efforts made in this department to improve customer service. And thank you, David, very much for those efforts and your staff. Um, for P Z C, is this proposed budget sufficient for the department to meet goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty?
Yes, and let me run down again, the, the, uh, two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars is for minutes. The three thousand, um, is for consultant, uh, the other three thousand is for legal notices. Uh, and again, the fifty dollar, the one fifty, uh, is for the, uh, statutory training. Yes, I believe it is.
Awesome. And have we covered Z B A? If I jumped.
You haven't.
But did you?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so I'll wait.
Okay, well, I, let me just run the line items from Z B A. Uh, again, the one, the one thousand eighty dollars is for, uh, clerk. The, uh, two, twenty seven fifty is for legal notices, no dues and memberships. Uh, the training and development for some new statutory is one twenty, hence the increase. But again, he's pulled that increase out of his own office supplies, uh, to flatten it out. That's it.
In Z B A, I think, uh, to a much larger extent than with planning and zoning and just planning and development overall. The efforts that Z B A has made, um, working with the, uh, planning and zoning commission to make regulation changes, reducing the need for variance applications makes things much easier for our residents and town staff. It reduces costs and headaches and, um, a lot of things that maybe weren't necessary, hence the regulation change. So thank you to both Z B A and to David in your office for making that happen. I think that makes a difference to residents in our town. Um, for Z B A, is this proposed budget sufficient for the department to meet goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty four?
Yes, thank you. I believe so.
Thank you.
Conservation Commission or Ag Commission?
I can, I can run down conservation. Oh, yeah. Yeah, come to the right of the line.
Yep, uh, dues and memberships went down. They're no longer a part of the Willimantic River Alliance, uh, so that's why it went down. Training and development is a hundred dollars. That is for the Happy Week. I'm not gonna get into all the letters there, conference. Uh, five hundred bucks for Conservation Commission. Um, they do contests, uh, and different things for gift cards in, in an effort to, um, do programming and, uh, get, get some help as well. Uh, the property maintenance, that is, uh, two thousand, three hundred and twenty five dollars again. An increase of seventy five dollars, but that is for signage, uh, basically when you get to a, um, conservation area, there's a sign, there's printed maps and such, uh, that's what that is for. Any questions?
I was gonna clarify with the, the professional services from twenty two, was, was that in relation to the forestry management or was that another project?
That's it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember?
Um, looking at the various, um, town budgets, our, um, pages fifty five through fifty seven, there's a list of all the different accounts.
Yep.
Um, there's a conservation fund, an open space fund, an open space maintenance fund. There's three funds.
Yeah.
Um, can any of these funds be used for property maintenance?
Uh, that is Lisa question.
I'd actually have to defer to David because I know that each one has specific things. I know one of the funds did have certain specific allowances to be able to use for certain maintenance, but, um, I know each one had specific locations that they could be used there. David, do you have the detail on that?
Yeah, so I, I can tell you the open space fund that can only be used for acquisition. It can't be used for maintenance. The open space maintenance fund, I'm not sure how much money's in there off the top of my head. Um, but we would need to, uh, I, I would need to get back to you with the specifics on what it can be used for.
What about the conservation fund?
That is a, I, I believe that, and, and Lisa, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that's the sort of, uh, carryover fund for, uh, private donations to the, the Conservation Commission. So we, we may have some flexibility with that fund.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving us that synopsis. Uh, is this proposed budget sufficient for the department to meet its program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty four?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
I was gonna add that the Conservation Corps also being offset a lot of the, the hours of labor that go into those trails as well, so.
That's a very good point. Thank you, Steve.
All right, Ag Commission, if you want me to run down the line items, uh, quickly here, again, five hundred dollars. Uh, that is, uh, two hundred dollars for, uh, program materials and three hundred dollars for property maintenance. Uh, keep in mind, I'm, I'm gonna lean on them a little bit more this year, although it hasn't not gone up, um, with the farmer's market. Hopefully coming to our town green, uh, near, uh, near you soon.
No questions? Councilmember?
Is property maintenance line solely for Campbell Farm?
Correct.
Do we have, like, long-term plans or an assessment of this property? Um, as Lee is on to Ag Commission, uh, this is on their agenda on a monthly basis. Usually, uh, there seems to be a constant need for, well, they're, they're actually been asking for the same thing for quite some time now about, uh, well, we're having water supply. Um, do we have a, a long-term plan for this property or for lack of a better term, are we winging it?
So, so we have a, a lease with Jack, your goal that is good for five years now with a five-year option to renew. As far as the well, we have a, a cost estimate from, uh, Stevens Brothers and, and our feeling is that once the, uh, Ag grants open up again, uh, this fall, we will submit an application to see, to see if we can, uh, get the state to pay for it.
Okay. Where do the rents for this property go? What, what fund do we use to maintain the rents?
That, I, Lisa, do you know the answer to that? We're at the Campbell Farm. Does it?
Oh. I don't think it's got much rent.
I think it goes to the account.
Is it, is it like a dollar a year? Is that the ones only?
No, it's, 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 uh, like two seventy five a quarter, I think.
Or maybe that, that's brand new though, recently. That would go into the general fund rents though.
The.
I'm sorry, the general fund what?
There's, there's a rental account that we have, um, we put the probate court rental, um, fees in there and any other type of dollar a year rentals that we get, things like that would go into the, uh, that account in the general fund. It's under, um, I think it's under other services or fees, but it's called rental income.
Okay.
Lisa, I thought they changed that. When we started, yeah, we did the contract with them and we gave the, we gave the Ag Commission the ability to have a bank account. I gotta go back and let you my one down here, but.
And then we have an ordinance for the Ag Commission.
Yeah, I thought the rent went to that account to offset the cost of the maintenance.
I'll need to go back to the ordinance on that.
I'm pretty sure it was set up, it was supposed to be set up that the rent went to that account to offset the cost of the maintenance.
I'll double check it and make sure that that's where it's going. If it's going in the general fund, I'll make sure it's. But I, I have to look at the ordinance.
I have it on my list of things to report back tomorrow.
Okay, cause if, you know, if we're getting two seventy five a quarter, um, that exceeds the department budget for the year, right? By a little bit, maybe twice. So, um, yeah, I think we should look at that again to make sure that the money that's coming in does go towards the property. Maybe it's, kind of makes sense. Um, and I, I remember from a recent, or from agriculture meetings in the fall, that there is a balance in the agriculture fund line from the, um, first farm to table dinner that the Ag Commission might be using for a scholarship. Is that right, David?
Yeah, they, so, so we do still have money remaining from that farm to table dinner back, uh, before COVID. Um, they, yeah, they had ticked around the idea of a scholarship a few months ago, um, and, and I think are, are still looking for a, a, a good way to spend that money. I don't know if they've settled on that.
Okay, thank you. And is, is the budget sufficient for the department to meet its goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty four?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, that brings us to item B of our agenda, Board of Education.
Okay, uh, Town Manager's Row Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four is forty two million, nine hundred and eighty nine dollars, nine hundred and eighty nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty five dollars. Represents a one million, two hundred and fifty two thousand, one hundred and thirty two dollar increase, three percent over fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. Uh, budget of forty one million, seven hundred and thirty seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty three dollars. Uh, in February eight, twenty twenty three, the Board of Education adopted the budget and it was conveyed to the town manager as required by town charter. The Board of Ed requested a budget of forty four million, two hundred and twenty three thousand, six hundred and ninety one dollars, which represents an increase of two million, four hundred and eighty five thousand, nine hundred and sixty eight dollars or a five point nine, nine six percent increase. Uh, the town manager's reduction to the Board of Education adopted is one million, two hundred and thirty three thousand, eight hundred and thirty six dollars. The Board of Ed worked with the town, uh, the Board of Ed worked with the town B O E consultant to determine the health insurance figures locked in. The insurance line item was adjusted for the number of employees covered. The salary line items have been updated for all existing employees, degree changes, step increases and, and contractual requirements. Gasoline and diesel prices increases have been built into the proposed budget. New rates were acquired in cooperation with the town for gasoline and diesel.
Questions? All right, I'm looking forward to questions.
Yeah, cool. People probably know I've been very upset this past week. It's no secret. Um, so, Mr. Polly, I'll put you in the hot seat because I.
Because I have spoken to you, and you may have town manager remorse on your budget number. Um, it closed three percent. The only reason why you did was because of the split vote by four. Uh, I agree. We cannot, is the five point nine-six is high. Um, and I believe you're going to the subcommittee of APA for more money to help, you know, reduce. Their insurance line. Now, you've known that money's been exist since a while. You've known you've had a health insurance problem for a while. Why now, but you decided to come to that committee? If the only reason is, I think, because you wish you. You wish you could have had that budget for.
You're inaccurate in saying that's the only reason, um, and that's wrong. Uh, the ARPA was a suggestion brought to my desk and I felt responsible to bring it forward uh, to council and to the committee.
But you've known that there was a health insurance issue. So how could you, you've known that for a long time, right? You've known these funds have existed.
Yeah.
It just feels like last minute, behind doors, that happened. And that's what's frustrated.
Yeah.
And I told you last week, I feel like there's a lot of conversations before you had the three percent, somebody talked to Dr. Willett. And that's what landed in the budget.
Yep.
So it's very frustrating. As a counselor, to have this all happening. I've been doing these budgets, you guys have been on the council longer, but I was part of the Board of Ed. Been through the budget processes prior to, I don't know, seven years. You know, there's always little things going on, but I really find. This hell, this whole. Happening of the three percent was somehow. Just orchestrated. That's how it feels and it's not comfortable.
Well, I welcome you to make your own determinations on how, uh, what occurred. And I understand if it's created some angst and I apologize. There's room for conversation. In everything we do. I do not have town manager remorse for the three percent put forward. Um.
Do you think it should be more? Say if it was a nine zero vote, like you said, you would have liked more, right?
I don't, I don't want to speculate on what would have happened.
That last week, though.
It would have been more difficult to lower or raise the budget if had there been a nine-zero vote.
So part of your reasoning was because of the vote?
Sure. Yes, had there been consensus, it would have been difficult to move it in either direction.
And just, it's very, very frustrating. I can see why citizens are upset and we've done a lot of great emails and I understand their concerns. Again, I want to declare that everybody, I'm. Would not have supported that five point nine-six only because of everything that's going on. But I think that three percent is absolutely. Oh, you just cut their budget literally in half.
I don't know, that's.
Yes, it is true.
I believe council, council.
Sorry, I'm not. I don't know. I don't know if I I cut it in half.
Uh, five point nine.
I did not, you, you said I cut their budget in half. That's inaccurate. I cut the increase in half. And let's be honest, the number I put on here is ceremonial. It's just a starting point for conversation. A conversation in which I hope there is consensus and compromise to which we all can come to some sort, we all, not myself. Can comes to some sort of consensus for the benefit of the entire town. You decide in the end what it's gonna be. Regardless of what I suggest. I have my reasons for suggesting. I'm not gonna have amnesia and forget about what's happened in all the referendums. Um, I'm not gonna consider everything in the town in regards to property values and in regards to the great education, the great job our teachers do. It's a lot. Um, a lot went into this, so I, you know, obviously. I understand how you feel. I made it, I made that decision based on one thing.
Well, I think a lot of bad decisions were made last week, completely honest.
I'm, I'm sure you feel that and you're welcome to, and you're you're voted to put in that seat to to make that comment and have that feeling. Uh, and I embrace that and thank you and I accept the criticism.
And I did send two emails and I still haven't received an answer. One moment, we would have gathered the insurance, like I've gotten a better understanding where the money's were going in and what was going out. Why wasn't there more planning that you knew the claims were gonna go up higher? Um, I also had one other email. Um, I sent it for to you, hopefully for Dr. Willett. I have no idea. Obviously, um. Dr. Willett. You know, did good work and was able to work with some vendors to. Um, lower his task. You know. Dr. Willett, the new numbers aren't on there yet. Like, you don't have that reduction. So if you go on that page, it looks like you're still having the one point two um, reduction. You're really not. Still pretty high, seven hundred thousand. So that was my email. I'm just wondering why I didn't get responses on this.
Everything you said, I I sent out for answers and did the best I can to respond back to yours as well as other uh, council members' things as as brutally as possible. Today, I sent your request to Dr. Willett. I'm sure he'll have an opportunity to answer uh, as to where his response is. Uh, I sent anything to do to say that that it wasn't well thought out. Exactly. That's your opinion. I, that's fantastic. We pay, uh, we pay a um. Consultant a good amount of money. To help us avoid being not well thought out. Uh, and that's, we've met with him regularly, uh. A number of times uh, throughout this process for suggestions. Um, again. If you believe it's not well thought out, like Colleen, I completely respect that.
I just feel like there's a lot of stuff that happened the last two weeks. I I really do, but that's all I have in a loop. As um.
All right, sorry.
Gonna lose anxiously.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to do it with my turn.
Yeah, I just appreciate it. And I just wanna make sure, Councilman, did you have a question for Dr. Willett to answer?
Well, yeah, I mean, sure. I was just asking, I was not meant to ask you, Dr. Willett, first, I could say, thank you very. But I, I go on your website and I understand Board of Ed stuff, but on your website, it shows the reductions of the one point two, but that's not really. Accurate, right? Because it's really more of a seven hundred thousand reduction now. So those positions. Potentially up to the Board of Ed, of course, gets to decide. Not the council.
So on the budget page, it does have the latest uh, considerations with respect to reductions. I think um, between transportation and use of your uh, diesel excess cost, the diamond oil. Nurse tub line, uh, moving around at librarians to create library manager positions and so on. Um, pick up five hundred nineteen of the. Of one point two, that's about seven hundred something left, mind something.
Right, I'm just saying, um, on the. Web, on your budget page, it says town manager budget adjustments and it's showing the one point two, you know, the.
Yeah, it's adjustments to the town managers.
Right, but is that number, I thought that number's lower now.
Well, the, it, that, that was from his budget, um, you know, proposal, proposed to council and then the the disaggregation probably might get there. What I've. Found and and what I have left, you know, to do is uh, is also listed there under that document. You click on it, it should come up as. A three fifteen communication to the Board of Ed, which is a short summary. Draft BOE reductions, because ultimately it's up to the BOE to decide, you know, what they wanna do. Um. What I tried to do is get there, this, you know, little, little impact on personnel is possible, but then in the yellow, you know, you kind of see where. We would need to go all the way through that to the, to achieve that full now. Um, so that's. Yeah, you know, and right now it's a work in progress because. We, we don't know for sure what the round numbers would be. This document kind of talks, that's the best thing I can provide right now as to how we get there.
Okay, it just, to me, when I look at it, it just looks like all these, no, unfortunately, you have to, going to have to make reductions, but this looks to me like. You have this list. But the reduction number hasn't been included, if that makes sense. But unless you've updated it today.
My apologies, I'm not sure. I can walk over there and look at what you're looking at, but wait.
It's the one that's dated three fifteen, the heavens to Board of Ed from WW updated three fifteen, short summary. A proposed draft Board of Education is to match town manager proposed budget.
Yeah, the only adjustment budget, potential reductions to match the town manager's budget. So that should open up essentially. What what I've found so far and what we might need to do in order to achieve the goal, just. I apologize, I'm tired of that. I don't understand what you're saying. That should bring us.
Well, fortunately, this is one of the questions I sent and just didn't get a response on. So at the bottom, it says total one million two hundred and thirty-three.
Yeah, that's, that, you're right. You are correct that that is assuming that the reduction is one million two hundred and thirty-three.
But it's not a reduction like that. You have, you were able to get the five hundred, six hundred thousand from various.
Well, that's what's in there too. I count that as down by those things. So if you look at transportation at nine point five percent, that's a hot, that's lower than what originally we were going to do this year. So eighty-six thousand comes off the one point two million and then special A R F use that's used most E R F for special transportation. Which is under ordinance eighty-six, chapter eight. You can do that for special ed. That's two fifty-four. That takes it down. So those numbers all kind, you know, show how it goes down. Essentially, what comes off to make it one point two million. All of those figures add up to the total reduction. So what I found is really north of the, is the north of the ad library manager line. Though each of those things takes a little, you know, brings the adds up to one point two would have to reduce. So, you know, getting a little bit uh. Less, giving the transportation company to accept a little less than the first year was once, you know, one way of achieving the differential. You know, and then that's how I can take that off. E R F use, excess cost, diesel, dynamo, those, those are the things that are to about the. Roughly five, the remaining. Six or seven would have to come from the stuff below. But that's the total reduction. What I found is in the, things that I found already. Are in there up today, but I'm working on other stuff too.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So. Okay, thanks. So then, Council Luba and I leave Council member.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, no. Just sort of building on what's already been discussed. The issue regarding the uh, insurance line item. Now, that's one where that became, that became an issue because we began self-insure. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and so this is something where although um, I'm prior, previously. With the insurance that we would be able to sort of predict because we knew what the going price was because we had the insurance company. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay, so since switching over um, to this self-insurance program, this is, how many years have we been in this?
Predates me, Mike.
Well.
Well, okay, and so this is something where it, that there's really based upon. The past history. Is this an unusual year for uh, for uh, for the cost, or is this something that we could have really anticipated?
Oh, I might get.
Yeah, it's, it's unusual. We've, we've been very, very lucky and almost spoiled, to say the least, because we've been at zero percent like three of the last four years, so. Um, so we haven't had an increase like this in a while, so it it's definitely ramped up our claims and. As we've talked about before, there's reasons we could say it's COVID or people going back and. You know, getting screenings and finding cancers, but this is kind of an outlier over the last several years. I can't remember a year it was this. High.
Okay.
Or.
Right, and then um. With regard to the overall Board of Education budget. All we can do is set the number, right? I mean, cuz I know that we've been through this before, you know, on a town council, we've had some very heated discussion. When we started going line by line, various items. We were told specifically that was not our role. And so all we can do is basically say, here's the, here's the amount. And then it's up to the Board of Education Superintendent Department uh, to figure out how to divvy that up, right?
Correct.
So as far as us being responsible for any changes in 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 manpower, in hiring or firing or cutting things. That's not our state. We just simply set the budget amount and then it's up to the Board of Education to set, correct?
I'm correct. I don't wanna speak for Walt, but for, uh, I'm sorry, Dr. Willett, but for me, I'm, that's correct, but I'm happy to take suggestions and 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 have conversation.
And then I think that in, at the joint meeting that we had, I think the Board of Education made it very clear that they didn't care about. The referendum or the other costs or anything else regarding the town, that they did what they thought was best for the Board of Education and for the school system. And it was up to us to make that decision uh, to as far as if we're going to approve that budget or not. Correct?
Loose interpretation, yes.
Okay. And um, so really, that's what our job is here right now. And that you uh, that you as a town manager, taking a look at this and taking everything into account, as you've already mentioned. The, how would it affect the tax, affect the mill rate, the tax increase, everything else, all the other things that we, that the town needed to cover. That was one of the decisions that you had to take into account when deciding how to, uh, on what increase. Uh, that, that, that the Board of Education budget would be, correct?
One of the factors, yes.
And again, I think that you're very clear on it, that this isn't actually a cut in the budget, but just not as much of an increase as was requested.
Accurate.
And that the Board of Education actually asked, uh, that Superintendent Willett. Gave a certain budget and the Board of Education actually came in higher than what he recommended.
Accurate.
So, I mean. That. The issue that I'm having here is that, again, that we, we need to set something up. Well, I would, let me back up for a second. Now, it was requested before that uh, from you. About doing a overall. Uh, research on the referendums and how the referendums, the budget referendums have gone since, I think you went back to two thousand and seven?
Yes, sir.
And that. The, I think that there was only uh, two times out of the entire time where there was ever a budget that passed in excess of. Four, even in excess of three percent. And that there was several times where it went down, not just once, but several times. Uh, resulting in a uh, a rough, a budget of actually less than two percent on several occasions. Is, is that, is that the, I mean, is that what, what, what you found?
I certainly use historical, historical perspective to approach the number we decided.
And. So another question ahead and just trying to, where, put it through all these hundreds of pages.
Your notes aren't exciting.
You know, hundreds of pages of questions for me. Hundreds of pages of questions for me.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Just hundreds of pages of the budget stuff. Hundred, yeah, well, I could get to the hundred pages if I needed to. Um. So, and then there is. Then, then going back to what we discussed previously as part of the joint meeting. They know that we discussed it time and time again is the overall. Salary increase and some of the not, some of the fixed costs. Where it's, it looks like ninety-seven percent of the Board of Education budget was actually items that we really couldn't address. Was that, was that accurate?
Yeah, I believe so.
And so. I mean, really, and this is something that. With the Board of Education, knowing that some of these costs were fixed costs. When, back when we were all, you know, at least uh, several of us here were going through when we discussed the uh, the contracts previously, that. The Board of Education had a number of years in which to appropriately plan and budget for some of these increases. With the salary cost, with the other insurance costs, with the other things. Is, is that, is that pretty accurate?
Prior to my arrival.
Yeah. And then um, one thing that I also wanted to 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 address as well is, and I can understand, you know, um. Also, you'd check's consternation regarding some things that came up and about some of the discussions regarding use of other funds, the ARPA fund is a potential other things. But. Wouldn't have been also been a dereliction of your duty had you not brought that forward since somebody brought that up to you. And that you would have been just as chastised if you didn't bring that up to us, saying this could be a possibility.
In the interest of transparency of the suggestion by my financial director, who I um, value very highly, um. She made that suggestion. I felt it prudent. I knew the weight of said suggestion, um, and I presented to. Um. Council President and Vice Chair for caucus. I thought that was a reasonable approach. I completely understand that others uh, disagree with the approach, um, and would consider it. Shouldn't we ever be in this awful situation again? Mark the calendar for next year. Um. That I would um. Reevaluate.
All right. Well, I'm looking through the rest of my notes. I have, that's all, that's good right now. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Luba, Council member, and then Vice Chair again.
Thank you. I would like to uh, reiterate that. The town manager. Changing the proposal from the Board of Education. Is very, very troubling to me. The Board of Education worked for months on this budget. I have always been incredibly impressed with. The work that the Board of Ed does. To determine. The. Best. Way to run our school system and the funding required to do that. I absolutely agree that the Board of Ed's priority. Is. There uh, the needs of our students, the needs of our staff. And I believe that they aim forward with a budget that was passed on a bipartisan basis. Not with a majority, that's how democracy works. To bring to the Town Council a budget to meet the needs of our school system. That's what we asked them to do and that's what they did. And for the town manager to give us a starting point for discussion of. Fifty percent of their increase. Seems like we're starting the conversation by disregarding what the Board says they needed. And that's very troubling to me. It was, these, the Board of Ed members are duly elected by the citizens. And they spend a lot of time and effort to come up with a budget. While. It is not within the scope of the council. To determine how the Board of Ed spends their dollars and cents. The Board of Ed and Dr. Willett have made it clear the impact. The impact to our schools, to our students, to our teachers, to the staff at the, at our school system. What will happen if. They get less than they asked for. And as Dr. Willett mentioned. There have already been efforts made to communicate the impact of that already. Some of those impacts include changing the payment schedule for transportation. Which is certainly within the purview of the Board of Education. Uh, to use the special education E R F to offset. Special Ed transportation and tuition. Uh, there was an excess cost adjustment. I believe that information and Dr. Willett could correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that information came to the Board of Education after the town manager. Uh, after the Board of Ed submitted their budget to the town manager, so that was unknown. Before the budget came to the town manager, as was the pricing for diesel, diesel and heating oil. So those adjustments which uh, come up to a little over five hundred thousand dollars are just the starting point. From there, Dr. Willett has presented to the Board of Education. This is about impact, uh, changing the nursing subs, substitutes. Changing the way our libraries work at our school by um, adding a library. Program manager who is non-instructional and removing librarians. By uh, changing uh, the state trooper public safety situation at our schools. Uh, reducing a math coach, reducing a counselor at the middle school. Reducing team and grade leader positions. Reducing the rope para position, a custodian, a business teacher. Librarians, as I mentioned, child development program and teacher at T H S. And uh, open for a grant to cover a full-time K-two teacher. I think it's important for us here on the council to understand what the impact is going to be to our students. I believe. That the quality of education provided by the town of Tallent. Is a humongous driving factor to our property values. And by chipping away, shaving, reducing however, whatever term you want to use. The Board of Ed, year after year after year, which is what we've done. We are slowly degrading the quality of education. I say to you, I have three children in the school district right now. There are members of this council who also have children in the school district, but there are members of the council who have. Children who have received the wonderful education of the district that it previously provided, and now these children have graduated. The children who have graduated, the children who are older than mine. Have received more services from the school system than mine are currently receiving. And certainly more than my children will receive in the last few years of their education here in Tallent. It's very troubling. Just because we are not cutting the specific programs, just because the decisions on how the Board of Ed spends their dollars and cents is not within our purview. It is irresponsible for us to ignore the impact of those cuts. So. Uh, my fellow counselor said that the Board of Ed has had years to properly plan for these increases and uh. The insinuation there is that they haven't planned and, and I would like to. Dig into that a little bit more. I'd like to unpack that a little bit more. Uh, is it alright if I ask Dr. Willett questions?
Yeah.
Right here for the board, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Willett, over the past ten years, what's the average increase to the Board of Education?
One point one five, I think.
Okay, uh, what, what would be a. A minimum maintenance budget for a Board of Education? Like how much would a reasonable increase be year after year in order to maintain services?
Two point five or three percent.
Two point five to three percent and the ten-year average is one point something, not anywhere close to three percent. Less than half. That's very, I, I say that part of the reason. That we're seeing a very large requested increase on the Board of Ed side this year. Is because we as a town have not done our job to properly fund the Board of Education over the past ten years. Not in any one particular year. Let's just take a ten-year average. We haven't done a good enough job. To support our Board of Education and fund them with a balanced, sustainable budget year after year after year. So it is not a surprise. That they're coming to us with a really big increase this year. Because we haven't given them enough money to maintain services over the past ten years. I don't think it's about lack of planning. I think it's about lack of us providing them sufficient services. I'd also like to touch on the salary increases, which my colleague touched upon as well. Uh, those salary increases did come to, did go through a Board of Ed negotiation process. There is a town council member who is um. Assigned to monitor those. I, I, I was lucky enough to do that this year. Um, and then they came to council for us to thumb up or thumb down. Uh, we didn't thumb, we didn't reject them, so they, they continued forward. Dr. Willett, can you just reiterate the salary increases that came through this year? Are they. Above area averages?
No, they, your negotiating teams did very well, you know, arguably too well. And I would say over the past many years, actually, uh, you know, the compensation has been mid or lower half of the range for most of our. So you have very competitive bargaining. I would call it a modest but fair wage. Um, but it is very competitive and you, you definitely are not getting Jif and Tallent with respect to compensation for your. Education staff, and I'm sure for your town staff too, that my value work is the education.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Can you talk to us briefly? About efforts that the Board of Education has made in the past, say, decade to act as a fiduciary to the town?
Yeah, I would say in the, the education system has had to transform in the last decade. Um, a lot of state mandates, a lot of things changed between the time even that I came in oh-six and now. Um, so there's a lot of specialized programs that needed to be created on. Those programs, and I credit the staff that, that I just happened to be in charge, but you have some, some very talented staff. Who recognized this coming in, you know, our principals, our director of services, you know, services supervisor. All of these individuals got together and over the span of the last ten years, you know, we created these programs that really cost avoidance programs. Um, they cost less than what you would have paid otherwise. And so as we transitioned over the last decade, you know, you'll, you have, for instance. Um, a very similar number of teachers, if you compare them over the past couple of years, most recent years. Much less, of course, than in the distant past. There's been adjustments for enrollment. But over the last couple of years, it's, it looks like it's stayed about the same, but really it hasn't because you've had to utilize your teachers in different places. You've never had to utilize them before. So arguably, there's fewer teachers overall for general education. Having said that, if those cost avoidance measures were not executed like we, like A V A, like T T A. You would be paying out so much more that you would have lost far more staff and you'd be in a far, far less favorable position. You know, we've also made adjustments over the years with respect to staff. Um, for a side, a district this size, you probably should have a curriculum, but you don't. Um, there's social studies coordinator supervisor, you don't have that. Um, you know, there's this kind of fallacy in some cases that you've actually added. For instance, in some cases, I would say like phone books from the state grant, those are an ad, but those are an ad. Has kind of been dictated by the standard for today of what you're expected to do in classrooms. Most schools are going to be using phone books and things like that. But with respect to other things, um, like curriculum supervisors. Years ago, that was a teacher with a stipend. They get paid almost, well, very close to what you're paying them now, but they couldn't do any evaluations. So, um, when, when, when the state added things that administrators had to do, for instance, they had to chair P P Ts, that's two hundred and sixty P P Ts. So you effectively lose an assistant principal because they have to chair the P P Ts. If you didn't have somebody picking up evaluations, the productivity of assistant principals become, you know, you'd have a point four assistant principal or you used to have one point oh. So the transition of uh, coordinators for curriculum to supervisors allowed us for not very much of a difference in cost to allow. Them to be O nine two certified people. They can take on a tremendous amount more with respect to um, evaluations and other things like that. Balanced out that loads, your A Ps can still follow up on things like bullying, you know, other stuff that goes on that's really important to cover. Um, so it's really, uh, it's a change that was a modification and process, not really an app. So where you used to have coordinators who are paid pretty much the same, now you have supervisors who can do way more. Um, but even then, you, you know, your three supervisors are still less than comparable districts have. I think a few years ago, there was this spreadsheet, we used to show that. Um, so the district runs very leanly, you know, you don't have that social studies supervisor coordinator, you don't have that curriculum supervisor. Um, you know, there are other things that um, you know, we've lost, haven't gotten back, or we've been making modifications and working our best way through it. Um, so there's a lot of things that you have, like the T T A and so on. Those aren't ads though, really from a cost standpoint, they avoided tremendous amount of cost. So um.
Thank you. I appreciate that summary and I think it's important for us to remember that the Board of Ed has. Made substantial efforts to control costs and to save money in creative and different ways. I guess this is more for town staff to put on the record. Uh, in our budget book, in three places on page seventy-seven, seventy-nine and three twenty-nine. The uh, budget outlines changes to personnel in the Board, on the Board of Ed side. But I didn't think that the town could dictate that. Could you explain that to us, please?
I don't have that in front of me. I'm happy to examine your pair of response.
Lisa, my.
Lisi, do you have an answer?
I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find what they're referring to, please.
Could you start, you could just start with three twenty-nine, that's the, that's the Board of Ed. Uh, section of the budget book and in the, it's, it's actually what's up on the screen right now too.
Oh, okay.
Has a reduction in payroll uh, right here.
Okay, um. You're talking about the manager proposed to the department proposed? Is that the number you're talking about? Okay.
Yes.
What we do until we can get a final budget, basically the manager only has the one line item. He can make an adjustment. What we do in the interim is just try to pick an account that more than likely will be the one. Where there'll be, you know, if he, if he were to make a cut, we try to, to go to those areas. We try to find out what we can get through the um. Superintendent May say, he may make a comment that, well, more than likely, most of it will be. In salary area. I mean, he won't know until he talks to his Board of Education. So we try to just, for line items sake, just allocate. On that line, but that it, in no way is the manager suggesting that. They should cut it a million dollars or whatever or programs. It's a grand total and maybe, you know, maybe we just do away with the two. We have the two different line items in our budget. So that it's easy for reconciliation purposes when it comes to payroll versus other fees that we pay. But um, in no way does he, you know, say it's either payroll or the other thing. It's just the grand total of the, the forty-four versus the forty-two nine.
Okay, so this, we, the town manager is not calling for payroll reductions.
No, absolutely not.
Town manager doesn't have that power.
That's correct. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification and I think it's important for the public to understand. Uh, it's just a mechanism on how the software works and is not actually a call for reduction. That that is uh, within the.
I appreciate that clarification as well, thank you.
I have outstanding questions on insurance. Um, I, I would like to thank uh, the town manager, Mr. Wilkinson, for providing. Some insurance information to us this afternoon. I did respond to that email with a able.
Lisa too.
Oh, Lisa too. Thank you, Lisa. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. I, I think that the information that we've been provided, or I saw anyway, uh, was for. The amount of employer contribution and the amount of benefit payout. By fiscal year uh, for health insurance for the town as a whole. Is that correct?
Uh, the town and the Board of Ed.
Yeah, but it's all combined. There's no breakout between the two.
Yeah.
Okay, so I did send an email, um, but I, I would like to see the breakout between what the contributions. The Board of Ed made as an employer and the town made as an employer and the employee benefit payout. For each side to understand. The overall costs and contributions there. I think that's an important thing for us to understand as we consider. Uh, the suggestion that came from Brian's office from Lisa regarding uh. The, yeah, Barba covering the insurance for Board of Ed or helping with the insurance for Board of Ed. Um, so I, I think that we still have some information that needs to come in. In order for us to consider um, how we're going to move forward.
I think we can provide that. Do you have any reservations with that, Mike?
Well, yeah, well, it's, it's a tougher yet, because we don't break that out normally, so we gotta go back and, and we create it. So I, I don't, I just don't, it's a tougher yet, but I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's just, it's, it's. We've not normally done that way, but um, we can try.
Yeah, Katie, that's one of the emails I asked last week, or Nate, I forgot a response.
Okay. Yeah, I just got this afternoon, I got a forward from Brian with some of that information, so. I think they're still working on it, so.
Did that go to everybody?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
I'm forwarding it right now. I'm catching up there's.
Sometimes when they send me, like Katie would send it to me with these two gentlemen, DC, so then I would respond back in kind. If she was, you know, the entire council to me, I would respond back in kind. I hope I'm not breaking with protocol. You couldn't respond all because then it'd be a label meeting, so it's.
Yeah, I usually make a point with BCC when I forward on information to the rest of the council.
I think those are all of my questions for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Murray. So that was Vice Chair Regan, Vice Chair Nuccio.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm gonna take part of what you said, Lou, about the um referendum history. Uh, Tom Manager's office was kind enough to forward that along to me, it was very short notice, I appreciate that. And Ms. Mary, your, your um arguments are very intelligent and articulate, and I appreciate it. Uh, my kids have benefited from the schools, so I hear, I hear what you're saying. Uh, except the issue I think we're facing with, Dr. Willard has mentioned this, he's rung the alarm bells a couple of times. He said things like. We're facing a tidal wave, we're facing a perfect storm, and this is the toughest budget he's ever had. Um, and to me, it doesn't really matter what we want, it doesn't matter what we need, matters what we can get. And by that, I mean, what are the voters gonna let us have? If you look at this referendum history, uh, we, we had a failure last year at three point two five. Um, about eighteen hundred people voted, about a thousand people voted no. And some rhetorical questions that come to me as well, how many of those thousand people that voted no are really paying attention to the work we're doing, the work that B A W is doing? Not many at all. Most people show up. They'll show up on referendum day and they'll, they'll see the sentence, shall town pass? Uh, the proposed budget of whatever it is, yes or no, if they see a three point two or three point four, no. And then I gotta work or I gotta get home for dinner, whatever the reason is, hardly anybody pays attention to what we're doing. So that needs to be taken into account when these budgets are are proposed and when they're put out there for for referendum. Um, because as I said, it matters what we can get, not what we want. Um, and there's things I want to, but I just don't think we can get it. Um, we, I have about seventeen years worth of referendum information here. Uh, we had a two point five two fail in, in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we had a negative. Referendum failed twenty seven, twenty eighteen, and we landed at a, a reduction of point one six percent. Um, so another rhetorical question I have is what do we do from here? I don't see voters giving the Board of Ed the interest they want. I don't see them giving the town what they want. So, so I guess my question to town manager is. Do you think the um town manager's post-budget as it sits today has a reasonable chance of passing a referendum? Because I, the way I'm looking at it, I, I think it's a, I think it's a failure. And I think we're forced to make cuts that we don't wanna make.
I guess it all depends on your definition of reasonable. Um. Like I said, it was, it was a starting point, uh, you know, I got. I, I thank the Board of Education uh for their volunteerism, for the absolute thankless job on both sides, um, that they have to. Uh, withstand going through this, uh, but certainly, uh, the history. And a lot of the rhetoric that we see in emails that we hear, that myself as a resident, myself as a benefit of a parent currently. Um, in our wonderful school system, you know, it's, I've been here, I moved here in nineteen sixty nine. Been hearing the same thing, same exact thing, year after year after year, yet year after year after year. Referendums are fairly in the same neighborhood. And we keep getting this great education um from our school systems. Reasonable, I think with some, some consensus, you asked, do I think has a reasonable chance? I think with some consensus and compromise, um. We can, we can get a budget passed referendum, but it's gonna take togetherness. You, you hired me. To make difficult decisions. Without identifying the counselor, I spoke to one uh privately a while ago and said, what do you want from me? And that counselor unselfishly said. We want you to make the best decisions and consider the entire town um when doing so. And that's difficult, and I think together, though. If we come to some compromise and consensus, if we avoid the polarization, if we avoid the escalating. I think we can um retain the confidence of the town and pass a budget, so I do think it's reasonable. Sorry for the long answer, Mr. Vice Chair.
You and I may, you know, we may disagree on this one, but um, yeah, we have a history, and if we use this history as a guide. This history is telling us that we can't get this through. So, and that's what I'm going by. That's the only thing I have that I can, I can reasonably point to say, to make an argument that. I don't think this can fly. I'm not telling you where to cut. Uh, I'm just telling you, I think you're going to cut. That's what I think, the board and the town. Uh, that's just my opinion, so I think it's either you, you do it now or you do it later. And if you, if we wait to, for a failed referendum, I think that starts a snowball going. Uh, back in oh seven, oh eight, we had five failed referendums until we landed on zero. And you still had seven hundred and twenty seven people voting no. They're, they're out there and they, they have the power. We don't have the power, so. That's my story, I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, I'm, I'm well studied in the referendum, um, although I wasn't deeply involved, thank you, I agree. Thank you, Vice Regan, Vice Chair Nuccio.
Just looking at these numbers, we had seven hundred and twenty seven vote no. Quite a few times, literally the no vote being around seven hundred and twenty seven, seven point seven, seven twenty two, seven oh four. Not to just point that out, but there are those absolute always no's, so. I didn't catch that until you said the seven twenty seven and then looked for the number through there.
I was actually here for all these.
I was too. I was too.
The one, what really got people upset, and this is my only. Guide to is never put the same budget forward.
Oh, yeah, no, I remember that.
Three point eight and then was put four, and that's why we did three more after that, because people were very angry. And ever since then, we always said what you just said, John, that you start at eight hundred no's, basically, is what you're, doesn't matter what's voting, so it's, it's a difficult.
And that was before social media, that, that three point eight, I remember, that was grassroots, people were outraged.
That year, but.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm dating myself here.
You and me both. Um, so I have a couple of questions. One on the insurance, um. Can you validate for me, maybe it's you instead? Um, I believe in the past, my six years sitting here, we have. We get a refer, we get a referral from our consultant saying um how much we need to have. In our fund in order to be able to pay claims, and in the past, we have not always funded it at the highest level. Um, to meet budget um concerns.
Well, again, part of being self-funded is there's, you have a little more flexibility, because, you know, so certain years where we're. He's, whoever the consultant is, they're always comfortable with what we do, but we might.
You have to lower spectrum.
We, you know, we might, you know, adjust it, because we have a little flexibility to get to a number, so like, like I said, we've been at zero every year for the last couple of years. But, you know, because of the flexibility, you know, we got to that number, but it's something that ultimately the consultant is comfortable with, and like that, but. But usually it's a, they start with a number that we know of, and then we adjust, um, just like this year. You know, and, and we ended up in a number where we all felt comfortable being at.
Did they want more?
Did they?
Did the consultant suggest that we have more money in our, our um account, or did they, is the. One point two, and what's that on the town side, like three hundred thousand, so what, one point five million total?
You mean as far, uh, I'm, I'm thinking more percentage, so the sixteen point two four two is what, um, I guess I look at it, but, I mean, that's, he was comfortable.
Point four two is that their recommended or is it seventeen?
No, it's sixteen point four two is the percentage increase in the rates.
No, I know, I know, I'm looking at the balance, I'm looking at the, you know, I'm intimately involved in how all this works, so I'm looking at like the. Amount that we have in the account to be able to pay the claims, um, is typically two months of trend around there. To be able to actually pay claims, if anything catastrophic happens, if anything comes up while you're building up your premium, you have to have a ba, you have to have a bank in order to pay. Current claims in the.
That includes all that in there. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's part of the, the increase that is there. But I believe in the past, we have been at the lower end of, you know, we have not, if they come back and say you need two million. We've said, can we do it on one point five to alleviate budget concern?
Uh, I, I don't know if they phrase it that way, they're not like, you need X. We always put aside what we need to do, we, we, we put aside both our risk corridor and also an IBNR that we put aside, so there's. There's a certain amount of, of percentage of, of money we have to put aside for those things according to each year. So, um, we do that, and, um, and then we have a little flexibility if we wanna move, but. Um, you know, we don't usually do, we can't do that much, like this year was really bad, so you can't really, it's, we gotta. We gotta take the medicine this year because it's so high.
You had mentioned that um. That. This was, my question is, is the high year, it was, it was asked about predictability. And I think the amount that we're putting into insurance right now, is that based off of pro, um, projection that claims are gonna stay. As high as they are next year, or are they, is it based on actual incurred um claims? Are we refilling our, our risk quarter?
Well, it's, it's based on a past trend, and then he's also projecting out what claims are gonna be this year. Uh, and it goes off of those two things.
Based off of industry, average and industry understanding. Okay, um. I've got like five different places for notes, yeah, um. Lasting insurance question, um, okay, um. The claims amount that we're paying, if we were to look at the ratio in which we have, like, for instance, I believe. The teachers' union has the richest benefit when it comes to what the town pays for their deductible. And they have um a lower percentage that they pay towards their premium, and we have some disparity here. Between um some of the unions and what percentage of premium is paid. Um, if we were to normalize that across all of the areas and bring it up to the averages that we see in other towns. Would that alleviate the, the amount of money that we have to put into this? Because the cost share would go more toward uh uneven distribution between member and town.
Uh, I use, uh, uh, that's a, it's a big question.
Well, we like to mess up here and have like all different kinds of rates.
So the, 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 the town's small, so we only have one plan, you know, we only have one plan, so we have three unions, so that, or. Or two unions and a non-union, so they have slightly different contribution amounts. So, I don't know intimately all the Board of Ed plans, but I know they have multiple plans. They have one like us, but they also have, you know, different plans, and I'm not sure which unions, how much they contribute, so it'd be hard for me to even estimate. How that would play out.
In theory, though, if everybody paid um. The same amount or a higher amount of their own claims, it would reduce the insurance.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, oh, yeah, of course, if, if people were paying more, the premium share, that would be, yeah.
So we're sixteen percent is definitely below average for the band, so if it went up to eighteen percent or twenty percent, then. It would reduce the.
Yeah, we have, I mean, the town, I can only speak for the town side, but we're between eighteen and a half and twenty one, I think, is what we have, between the three unions. So obviously, the one who's paying twenty one is paying more than premium. Uh, more than free.
Okay, um. Insurance, have we, we have checked and double-checked with our insurance consultant to validate the rates that we need the money. Um, as indicated.
The sixteen point four two percent? Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we're, yeah.
Okay, I think that's all we have for insurance for, um, for. The Board of Ed specific, one of the items, Dr. Ward, that was brought up was two hundred thousand dollars in open vacancies. And also an increase in the sub-line who were doing the work for those vacancies and the continued increase on top of that. So to me, that's a, um, that's double. So is, has that been looked at for any sort of reduction or staggering of those opens? And all of those, and are all of those opens assumed to be filled by seven one?
We have, um, the, the vacancies you're speaking of are actually being covered by subs, just don't have. Typically, the paraprofessional compensation down. Um, it's not attracting a lot of people, so we've had to also pivot to different classes of jobs. Different uh classes that address different needs in the classroom, so that has an additional cost to it. Um, and so many of the positions are being done by, uh, covered by subs right now. In addition to that, um, those substitute lines, I, I see them trending to bring those figures down, especially as I look at our most recent. Um, in a document for this year, um, those funds are being, you know, are being exhausted pretty quickly. I don't expect to have a lot at the end, however, um, those also stand as an offset right down to our increased special education. So it's, it's gonna balance out in the end of this year. Um, we also weren't able to use all the subs. Um, we were usually able to use some to cover the paraprofessionals, but we had to curtail a lot of things, um, to try to. Make sure we had enough at the end, so we're, we're in a budget freeze right now. Um, but I would not wanna eliminate those pair of positions that are quote unquote open, because they are being covered by other people. Um, and I don't think that that's gonna be possible as we're completing a new.
I guess my concern though is, is you have two hundred thousand dollars in open vacancies. Um, do you assume that all of those are being filled seven one?
In the next few months, no, but I do assume that they will be filled uh within a reasonable amount of time or reclassified. Because those are, most of those right now are required by.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not being clear, it's my fault. Um, are they assumed seven one in the budget? Are they full year?
They are funded in the budget, yes.
Okay, so we have the two hundred thousand dollars worth of vacancies as seven one, but we've also increased the sub-line. To pay them to do the work of the people who are vacant.
Um, I think I, I answered that question on Board of Ed a few days. And so I would say that, um, the sub-lines, it's not exactly an equivalency.
Right, it's not one to one, of course.
Right, and, and, and I think it's, it is gonna get run down, we did adjust, we also added something, I think we transferred one of the lines that used to be elsewhere into that line. So it looks a little bigger than it was, but it's not really a substantial increase in what we, you know, are doing. Um, with respect to those, we keep calling them vacancies, but they're being covered by others right now, um. And they're required by, so I'd have to replace them even if we didn't have them. Uh, which means that if that got cut, we would have to be adding ITs back, uh, people would question that. Would be required by, you know, by, we got to do it, but it would create a situation that I don't think would be very good from a office standpoint. But also would probably drive other lines negative as we compensated for that. Um, so give me a minute, I'll see, okay, substitutes, um. I'm trying to find where we covered that in there.
I believe it's budget question five, I'm just doing a quick search.
Yeah, budget question twenty two talks to it to some extent, but, um. Yeah, so budget question five also speaks to it a little bit. And the F, F Y twenty two actual for the line was five hundred fifty three oh thirty three, yeah, why, three budget was three fifty four, four sixty seven. Currently, the long-term subs FY budgeted seventy three ninety seven, we have spent, and this is that, that moment in time, this is January ninety, nine month six. Around the first six months of this year, only, um, included, you would pay here September to December. There's a one-page summary that discussed some of this, um. Some of the increases attributable to the movement of the custodial sub-line, which reduced one point two and increased by one fifteen by fifty thousand. We expect to utilize this amount, and, um, the TPS system is experiencing outings as needed by numbers. Particularly as we head into the winter and now with the health, so something that's been plaguing us. We have a number, a lot more childbirth fees happening right now, which probably will continue into next year more than we expected. It's gone from one to three per year, it went from one to three per year to four to six per year, this time. Probably will continue based on what we're seeing. So I I wouldn't look at that as too too rich of a line, and I think that's going to bounce out, especially when we look at. How much special ed is is actually costing now as a result of. The pandemic, so I think, you know, I don't think that's going to be replaced, we're really going to be able to make massive adjustments. And that does include the transfer still.
Thank you for all of that explanation. Um, I'm still, I just think if we're planning for a salary in two places. Then that is problematic. I understand you have subs doing that work, but the increase in subs, I would expect to at least offset part of the. The salary of the vacancies. From the perspective of um. Incumbrances, I know in our last audit, I believe there was over a million dollars worth of released encumbrances. From the Board of Ed, I think that was over a few years. So at the end of the year, I know we encumber a lot of dollars. For spending that we think is going to happen. Do we have any idea um why that number would be so high? Are we encumbering expenses and that we don't need to be?
Well, I'd have to, you you want to present that in a written form. I know that, I think at the end of the year last year, we had about nine thousand left. And in a normal typical year, we don't have all that much left at the end of your budget. Certainly, there's a lot of things uncovered for services and other things to carry over. Um, it's still the main V eight option thirty, if they should reconcile by September. Um, so if you give me that in a written form, I'll give you a longer narrative as an minister, because it's hard for me to confirm exactly what you're referring to, but I'd be happy to do that.
Perfect, thank you. Um, and did the five hundred and something thousand dollars that you found in cuts include the increased amount of the excess cost?
Yeah.
No.
It does, it includes seventy-six thousand of that, it's a cost differential. It's about seventy-six thousand, we expect to get eighty-five percent reimbursement. So yes, it does include.
Perfect. All right, thank you very much, um. Brian, back to you. As you said, um, you know, I've lived here, not quite as long as you, you're older than me. You'll get that, yes, but um. As you said, you know, I. I remember these, I remember these, I was voting when we was all around. So, and you know, by then, I'd already, I owned my own home and taxes were of a concern to me, so looking at this. You're right, we hear the same things all the time. It's the same things my mother would complain about. When her and my father would talk about the taxes and everything, it's the same. So in this budget book, which I happen to love the beginning of this budget book more than anything, have we seen the values of talent homes decrease dramatically? Or at all?
No.
No. Are talent homes right now selling for more than they were in the last year or two years?
I'm not the right person to ask that, I'm sorry.
I believe it's in the the beginning of the book, I think it is.
Yes.
So I understand also, listen, as you all said, and I'm a parent, I have kids go through these schools, I graduated from this school myself. Listen to my parents talk about this, I'm talking about the same things they're talking about. You know, Talon is an excellent school system. A lot of it is, you know, I I didn't. Didn't graduate high school with the grades that I got in college and all that, a lot of it is. You know, what we put into it, what we get out of it, what our parents put into it, what our parents get out of it, and that, and. The budget that you put forward, you know, I agree with what John said in some sense, you know, a three-point-four percent increase. We just had three-point-two-five percent last year that was voted down. I think for the most part, it's a fair and reasonable budget. I don't think I can support anything higher, you know, at at all, I don't think so. You know, I, as I mentioned, if you look at our our Alice numbers, you look at our poverty rates, you look at all the stuff. Town's poverty rate has jumped up to a limit that I don't think it has been at since I've lived in Talon. I don't think it's been at four-point-six percent in that I know of. I think you did your job. Your job is to put forward, and it's funny, because I don't think I'm the person that you were talking about before, but your job is to put forward a budget. That meets the needs, no, I'm sorry, that thinks of the entire town. And says, is this something that the town of Talon um can support and afford? That is our job. It is our job to look at the overall, to look at all spectrums, to look at all fifteen thousand people. And say, are we putting forward a budget that is providing what the town wants and is willing to pay for? And this sheet here, the copy of the referendum history that you shared, shows Talon's willingness. To support the budgets as put forward. So um, you know, it's, there's stuff in here I think we can tweak. Here and there, there's stuff that I think we can look at, I think there's some optimization maybe that we can make in that, but um overall. This is what you were hired to do, you are the town manager. To look at the town as a whole and put forward your best estimate for a town budget for the town. And I think you did that. Now it comes to us, as you have said before, and we get to poke holes and debate and 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 put forward a. A budget and then go forward outside to see who votes for it, so um, about it, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman. You too, and Councilor Cal.
Brian, I think uh we hired you to make a. Where you want. The budget you. Put it out. You think, what do you think, is it is it fair to the town, is it fair to uh Board of Education?
Are you asking as a town manager or as a resident?
Uh, no comment.
Do I think it's fair? But I I think my opinion on it being fair is not overly relevant. Whatever you guys, whatever council decides. I'm certain I will think it's fair and I will respect that, um, and I look forward. To whatever that number is, all I ask is that there's consensus. I have a, I have a mom who's eighty. And on a fixed income. I have a daughter who's getting a wonderful education. I have a home for which I've been paying taxes and I've been paying taxes here a long time.
Which one now, which one would you like to sacrifice, your daughter or your?
My mom would pick me to be sacrificed. Thanks, Sammy, you're a good man. Look, it's 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 a difficult decision. Um, I thought it was fair. And I'm willing to wager, there's people on both sides of the political aisle that would uh disagree in different directions. Uh, so I had to, I had to come out um with a decision and. It is what it is, my feelings will never be hurt um based on a decision that I've made. As I've said before, I've made. I've made tough decisions before, so um. This is what it is, and and I'm here to serve, and if and you you guys tell me to do something, I will march in line and do exactly that. And I I embrace whatever this council puts forward and whatever referendum does, so um. That's another long and long-winded answer, uh, Councilman Khan, I apologize.
Thank you. Dr. Wall. At three percent. We are talking about here, is this enough for you to support? The Board of Education or whatever you do, is it enough?
I want to compliment the town manager. I mean, you know, and answer, that's a complicated thing to answer, and I'm long-winded, but I would say this, you have a, you have a very hard gears. Insurance constitutes three percent of the increase. So I compliment the town manager because I think he's doing everything he can with three percent. But you know, if you're asking me frankly about the situation that it's in. You're looking at a one-point-two million dollar, you know, hit insurance, because it's about, you know, it's. It's the, it's, it's every forty thousand is a percent. So you're looking at an impact to your school system as the equivalent of about a zero, which is what's going on. Which is also why I would be afraid of having. You know, any failed referendum, because you can see the impact of where we are right now is of quite a few staff reductions. It's a lot, and people are criticizing and extremely angry over that, as you imagine, and you've seen that, and you felt some of it, but understandably so. And I do get, you know, the direction does usually come this way, mostly, but it spreads out. So, you know, you do have a situation, it's very difficult, and and I have a compliment to the town manager for what he's done, I think he's trying, and I think it's tough here. I think that there are mechanisms at your disposal. You know, one of the things about a zero year, which is really what this is. Is that usually you have a couple of years, you have to recover from the zero year. Every time there's been one of those. Yeah, the stuff that gets reduced, there's a a lot of adjusting that has to be done. And that would be true, so if I'm giving you Frank as the answer, you're looking really at the equivalent of a zero. And the failed referendum would make that, magnify that, make it a lot worse, and I'm trying to give you a fair, balanced answer to that. If there are mechanisms that are at your disposal to offset that, it probably, and I don't know, but it may not be the same, you know. Next year for insurance does tend to have lips, all insurance has lips, no matter what you're talking about, there usually is a cycle for insurance. And it does have these lips. So, you know, hopefully this, you know, this blip would have a pretty heavy impact.
Hey, one more question, I'm sorry to say it, but I don't want to say it. My question to you is. With the three percent. You don't have. Let's say if a mom over there. She complained to you that, hey. My kid is not getting a milk in the morning, or my milk, my daughter is not getting a juice in the morning, so what your answer is going to be? Uh, she is not getting a cereal, what's, if you cut down that, what's your answer is going to be?
Well, fortunately, the state of Connecticut has provided.
I'm literally talking about that, you said that three percent is not enough.
You're asking about hard choices, to be frank, but um, you know, does this mean that somebody wouldn't, because their taxes might wouldn't be able to afford necessary. Human services, right? That's always, that's always the question, and um, Mr. Foley was responding to that, and checks the zip that his father and and his job. You know, I I think it's just a matter of, you know, this is the nature of the budgets, it is the council's burden to set it. It's the board's burden to say what's needed. Um, I respect the process, you know, I'm just trying to give you the best, single balanced answer I can. You have a strange year this year, because you have such a big blip, that that has the chance of having some extremely negative impacts on your. You know, on your boards, on your, on your education services. You know, but uh, and I think that same parent, you know, would would want to make sure that the certain services were available for their child if I'm giving you. Um, but I can understand your process, I respect it, I will work to do everything I can. I actually do, and I will, and many of us do, and will, do everything we can to support. You know, to support um Board of Ed and the town, it's just that when we do, it compromises other services you have, so you know. It's tough, it's a tough situation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Foley, the last question to you is, if Alpa says no to your request, what are you going to?
Not forward the request to the town council.
No, what what's what's your other plan?
Um, well, certainly, that's a a a potential opportunity, uh, but I. Connect with staff and talk, but again, it comes down to what are you going to do? Um, and I'm going to do exactly what you guys tell me, and if you want, the budget set at a certain point. Then I'll do it, and and.
My my question is like, if the if the opposite says no to you.
Yeah.
Who are you going to cut out, what are you going to cut, because it's not, if you want to throw us on the bus, okay, that's fine too, but like. The question comes to you, if opposite no. Are you going to cut, more cut to the Board of Education, or are you going to cut the town, town side, what are you, what are your thoughts on?
Number one, I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, I would never do that. Ever, uh, so I don't know what you mean by that, that I'm going to throw you under the.
No, I know, it's just a conversation, I'm just wanting to carry on, because. Last week, that's what happened with Alba.
Yeah.
You talked to a chair in West area.
Yeah.
Nothing came out, three was surprised, what the heck is going on here? And those two gentlemen, they didn't pass any single thing until your email come down on Friday. And I said, what the heck is going on? Somebody, at least somebody should have just to come out and say something. Uh, that they say short of the money, or you are short of money because you you are the captain of the ship. What's going on, we should, we should be aware, you know, rather than at the last minute. Like everybody else in town.
One, but you got advance notice of it, and it wasn't the last minute. Because you, council framed a process for which it goes to the ARPA Commission first. The ARPA Commission has a, has a process where it will be voted on. Should it fail, the ARPA, the ARPA, uh, I'm sorry, committee. Then there's no need, it doesn't even go to council. Should it pass, then it will go to council, and that's when you guys would discuss. Through all this is robust conversation. Transparency uh about, you know, what what's needed or isn't. And and I haven't decided how I'm going to vote on the ARPA as of yet. I'll listen, we'll get together as a group and make our decision. Uh, but there exists a fund, a suggestion was made, I brought it forward in the most prudent manner, I'm sorry if you disagree. I understand that, uh, but there was a process. We would follow that, this is in no ways out of out of line of that. If we decide to use that money, ARPA. Great, if we decide to use a portion of it, great, if we decide to use absolutely none of it, great, we as a town are going to survive. And we're going to put forward a budget here, uh, and hopefully, uh, with some success in referendum through consensus. And again, I would never throw any one of you uh under the bus, and and I think what makes us so strong as a council. Uh, is our ability um. To have some consensus, uh, to be collegial, um, and to compromise what we can, uh, so. If it happens, fantastic, otherwise, I don't, I don't decide. Um, what uh the Board of Education cuts. Um, or how much is cut out of each each budget, so again, that falls on the town council.
Thank you. The only thing I. The only things is troubling me that if you are saying that the million-dollar position, then plus whatever it is, chunked edition. And whatever we are giving him is not enough, so how he's going to survive, and how the kids are going to make it through. If they add better education. And then I have a complaint, I have a complaint to. One, two, three, four, five, five, five of you, as residents of Talon, Talon. Is this? Is Talon, Talon is a bus stop, I'm sorry to say it, but that's my opinion. It's not a bus stop, that you guys come in. Don't take me long, okay, it just, it just, my two is like, it's like, it's troubling me. It's fourteen thousand people lives in Talon, Talon, you got one, two, three, five people. Are concerned about this budget, about three percent budget, I know, I'm just. They're over there. Here's my, here's my things, please. It's not something that I'm. As I said, I I have a complaint, it's not something I'm saying that. I have a complaint to the town, let's do the town. Please come out, support us, we are seven of us, we don't, every single one has a, their own thought. I don't have your thought, I don't have your, what's going on in your mind. Please support us, please come out.
We're here.
I would say come out, it's not something that I email X, Y, Z, and my responsibility is over. Please come out, please say something, and like, you know what, Dr. Wall is not doing his job. Three percent is not enough, come out. Make it, make a noise, so it's like, he would know, he would know, and we we should know.
If life has an open parent discussion, I'm sure the town residents would be.
I know, I know you're proposing that to the statement, but it can't be a back-and-forth conversation at the at this time.
That's, that's just, that's one of the biggest, men I've had, because I want with the community together and. That's, that's just, that's one of the biggest men I've had because I went with the community together and definitely I'm, I'm. I mean, it's tiny business compared to town, town, okay? But if I don't have money, I don't spend it. But it's like, this is totally different theory, but that Dr. Wall. I mean, he has, to me, I think he doesn't have a choice. If the insurance is going up or whatever the insurance expense is going up, inflation is going, everything else. It's like, you know what? That. Maybe I don't like him, but like at this time, my. Heart with him because like he got no other choice. I wanted to support the kids. I do, I really do want, I want to support my kids. Honestly. And it's like, it's like, I'm trying to present all of you guys, but it's like, how far, how far we can go. Because the town, because this town. I've been there, but I don't know about twenty one year. I've not seen. Much of gold, neither in business, neither in any, any government. So why can't we get together and start reinvesting in, in our town, in town or town? And that's my biggest question is to all of you out there. Maybe there's about a hundred people over there, five here, there's one or five. Where's thirteen thousand people? And that's all I have to say. I'm, I do want to support the town. And that's where we are all seven of us here. But how can we do that? Very limited budget and that the book. Has about five hundred pages. Who created this? Not to walk and listen. Who else? I'm just saying that it's just like, yeah, it's like they are most, they are most. Common. They did that. They are doing it, but it's like. Do, do they have, where they're going to get the money or where, where the resources are? Do you ever thought about it? How the town, how this guy is going to run the town? They are very limited sources for the town and town. And as I'm saying that, if Alba says no. Then where we stuck, as he says. Less of. I'm sorry, last year, eight hundred ninety seven people said yes and seven hundred eight says no. To the second. That's my town is, my town is like. Eight and nine hundred people is going to vote for fourteen thousand people. That's the only thing I'm, it's ba, it bothered me. So, uh, am I going to make a decision for thirteen thousand people? Am I going to make a decision for you? And that's the only thing, you know, like it, it's just. That, is this book mean anything? I put in the garbage, just put in the garbage after this meeting. I don't know, I don't know what you're going to make out of it, but it's like, that's my thing is. What I'm going to tell him, I mean, you know what? You got no money. Go to a good. Where I'm going to get, where we can get the money. That's what he's looking for. At least this was the reason he moved. Well, sure, tell me. If anybody have a question, email me, please. I, I would love to know. Thank you very much to listen for my garbage.
Thank you, Councilor. But I will say, don't, don't self-deprecate too much. Cause I think you asked a really pointed question to Dr. Will about. Whether or not he could support the three percent. And it makes me recognize that we have at least four, five, six members of the Board of Education. And I think we should be asking that same question to each one of them. I'm not going to call them out and require them to answer it now, but I would request that be. Strongly considered if you're able to reach out via email to the entire council, me individually, speaking of participation, I think we need your input. You know, cause I'm seeing, well, I see might be Sophia Shake. I see an Ashley that could be the chairperson. I see Christina Florida, Kristi Griffin. Dana V O E, which is, as soon as Dana filled them, you have Jen Gal, we have Board of Ed members representing us and. You know, we've had a lot of back and forth with Dr. Will, but I think the board is also a voice we need to hear. Now, I know myself and a few other counselors were on and heard some of the responses last week, but some members of the board were absent or didn't even speak on the budget. So. Getting your input about what this budget means to you would be really appreciated. In addition to all the residents who have reached out, because I greatly appreciate all the emails we've been getting and I've been trying to respond as prudently as I can. So. That's just something I want to throw out there to, to board members. Doesn't have to be now, can be during the public participation at the end of this meeting. The public hearing can be emailed to council, but I think we need to hear your perspective on this as well. But with that, I'll go around for a second. Line of questions and Counselor.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just a few, a few things. One, we're talking a lot of, I mean. There's been discussion about ARPA. That's not on the table at this. That's not something that we should even consider. And I would just ask Mr. Foley, when you presented this budget, you already presented this budget and then this came up as a secondary thought afterwards. Is that correct? Correct. So even if you didn't, even if, you know, say if this does get through the ARPA sub, uh, subcommittee and it gets brought for the council. And it, it's a, it gets passed. That's just a bonus, correct? It's not going to affect this budget overall, as, as you proposed.
That would, that's, I need to think that out.
Well, let's, the budget that you have here was, did not consider anything coming out of the.
That's accurate. When that, when that, when that three percent, yes, originally, yes.
Right. So, so that's something where we should be looking at this budget as it's presented, period, end of story, and not considering anything else unless and until it's brought forward. Uh, I mean, that's my suggestion. Because right now we're looking at, well, how could this affect this? How could this not affect it? When we, that's not before us and it's not properly for us and won't be properly for us unless and until it makes it out of that subcommittee. Um, my only comment on that, you know, and I will make a slight comment on that is. It's poor planning to use one-time funding for operational costs. That is just bottom line. That's something that we've addressed that before. When we've, uh, during prior years on the budget and that is something that we did one time and we've seen how it's affected our budget over the, over the next several years. Um, the one question I do have is that we hear a lot of rhetoric about, you know, about schools and how this is going to affect schools and everything else. My question is, do we have actual hard numbers? As far as, do we have a number as far as a drop in, um, or any effects regarding mastery tests? Regarding SAT, regarding graduation rates, regarding college acceptance? That's hard numbers. And that's something that if I, if, if you can show me hard numbers, that there's in fact, one way or the other substantial effect. Then that's something that may sway my decision one way or the other. So that's going to be my request to, to Mr. Foley and to Dr. Will is. If you can present numbers, a trend over the past, say, ten years. Regarding mastery scores for high school, let's go high school seniors. And let's just look at that. High school seniors scores, the transfer mastery score rates, SAT scores, you know, some type of metric. And I hate using SAT scores as metrics and, and mastery scores because. Many schools just, they, they, you know, they train to the tests. But if there's a solid number where you can show me some metric. That we could judge years across. So that people aren't saying, oh, well, you're, you know, you're destroying the schools, you're destroying the education, you're destroying this, you're destroying that. If there's a metric that we could judge against and it shows a significant change one way or the other. Then that's something I'd be willing to look at. So whatever metric that, that, you know, that can be used. Uh, you know, like I said, either mastery scores or SAT scores. Uh, I'd like to see that, you know, even drops in the, the overall. Grade point average, the numbers of people that, you know, are getting accepted at colleges. As opposed to people that have decided not to. Something like that, uh, that, that would be outstanding because I think that's something that we would all like to see. One way or the other. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
And also, and just to clarify, because I have the budget book page on me right now. But are you looking for something similar to what was requested at the beginning of the meeting in terms of certain departments don't have. Uh, performance measures and other data associated with budget requests in terms of metrics or staff numbers and, okay.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at like, you know, this is the one area where I think that unlike some of the other departments where, you know, you look at. You know, number of hours worked and assignments and things, projects that are accomplished. This one where we can actually get hard data, where there's. You know, there's a set score. There's a mastery test with scores. And if we could show that, you know, that's something that, you know, that's what education is all about numbers, unfortunately sometime. And so that's one thing I'd like to see.
That's a reasonable request. I know, I think Lisa does a phenomenal job at the budget book every year and is always looking for areas of improvement. So I think that's an opportunity. But I'm sure also Dr. Will could provide some of those metrics to the council. If requested through, uh, Mr. Foley.
I think we do have, uh, some of the information though for. Mastery scores. I was just looking for it right now. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no worries, Lisa. And it doesn't have to be exactly right now. It sounds like something that might be good, um. Uh, plan for further deliberation, but also going forward for the budget book layout, but I'll open the floor as.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor.
But that will be an official.
Thank you.
Can I just, there's a data portal off our site.
I'm sorry, that.
You say, there's a, this, uh, extension off our site called the data portal. It has all of the data.
Thank you.
Right. Are there any other questions from council members? Remember, you're not.
Yeah. Uh, Dr. Will, would it be fair to look at the following, uh, data points? To help understand impact. Referral rates to sped, class sizes, retention of staff, referral rates to counseling. The accountability index. Would those be fair, uh? Numbers to use to understand. What's going on in our schools?
Yes. Yes, among others, but yeah.
Thank you. So, uh, if this is an official request, I'd like to add on to lose. To include those items and I'd be happy to email them off. Uh, since I sort of just.
I'd appreciate it if you would, please.
Yeah, no problem. I'm happy to. I think, um. To. To directly. To directly talk to my colleague. I agree that, um. Accountability and understanding trends with hard numbers is important. I, I agree with you. But I think there's more to just our student scores. And that's why I asked about those other items. Because I think it's more than just. How our students are doing on the SATs, but there, there are other things to consider like, um. For example, students who, uh, have multiple years of, uh, foreign language classes in school. When they move on to college, they are often waived from having to take foreign language in a college setting. Which saves me as a parent. Money on my kid's college tuition because they have one or two less classes they need to take. Um, so the impact of changes to the offerings from our schools. Are more than just, it's more than just the scores. Um, and, and I'm not saying the scores aren't important. Please, that is not where I'm going. Um, but. I think there's, I think there's more to it than just the SAT scores, for example. Dr. Will. Is this three percent budget sufficient for the Board of Ed to meet its goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty four?
It'll be a challenging year, but I respect the process and I understand that. It would be very challenging. If, if we have all these reductions, it's a challenge.
Great.
Just as an aside, you know, you realize as a superintendent, obviously it's a double edged sword for you to say.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Performance. I would say this. You know, you have people bending over backwards to try to make sure that your performance data is good and it is good, or at least it's competitive. You know, in the, in the realms, SAT is more than competitive, many other areas more than competitive. Uh, but you're, you know, you're, uh. Those are, are but one indicator of, of success in a school system. Others will be things like. You know, are we able to adequately address the social, emotional needs of the students? Are we able to retain staff? I would say we have a massive challenge right now retaining staff. We use a lot of districts to pay more. As parents, as teachers, we are having that kind of attrition. It is a challenge when we do hire people, our steps. Uh, can't reach out to some of the steps of the people that are coming, so they turn them down. So we go through the entire hiring process and we can't reach the pay that they get in some other places. Um, and so that is a real thing that's affecting the district right now, you know, and that, that kind of stuff. Makes it very difficult to, once you train people, you lose all the training when the people, you know, go and take jobs elsewhere or attrition. It is, it's a tough thing that we're dealing with. Um. So I think you'll find the scores are competitive or even better than that. But if you look at the other indicators, I think we have some challenges. Climate challenges, you know, we've lost a lot of the courses we would do to, you know, to address some of those things. Attention challenges, you know, we're struggling to, to make that work. And considering all the struggles that we have, the people that are working for you are, are hurting the handle at both ends to make it work. That's why it's working. Sooner or later, people stop doing that. And you're starting to see how some people are stopping that, you know, and they're, so we're trying to do everything we can to keep. And to keep things going the way that we know we want them to.
Thank you.
Counselor, would you?
Dr. Will, have we eliminated foreign languages in high school?
Did you?
Have we eliminated foreign languages in high school?
At the high school?
Yeah. So from the college perspective, I know my kids just finished college. So, well, one of them did anyway. The other one is still one that's still in one more year, but, um. The high school language that they took all transferred and they didn't have to. They didn't have to take any foreign language in college. It's high school level foreign language that is transferable or considered for college credit. So. As long as we still have Spanish and French, and as we have anything, unless I knew my kids, it was Spanish and French, but. Um, that's still at the high school level, right?
Any other questions? For Walter Ryan regarding the O E budget?
I think I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
Question. Know, Dr. Will, that you can't really talk to like special education things because, you know. Reason we should know how to be. But our, our numbers higher than a lot of the around town, the flowers, definitely any children. That even lead us work in the classroom. We know, again, um, Mr. Will, our mentioned scores, I know, I'm. I can, don't even, they get exempted. What? Want to have a wonderful name?
Oh, whatever. Okay. So you know what I mean? Like scores are not everything, but I think. If it would be fair, I think KDS for two is if our special education numbers are high, we do have to. Consider that as well. Not just for kids, but in all the ages.
Yeah, you know, I think post pandemic or, or, I don't, we, most of us are post pandemic as we're all done with it. But the impacts, and so I think this district and others have seen an increase in those identifications. Obviously those were exacerbated by things, but what we call tier one, two and three, general education services, if those aren't in place, the technologies aren't in place. That tends to have an exacerbated effect on identifications for special education. And so we have experienced that in so a lot of places. It is something that we have to work, we're doing our best to work. We could use more special educators and there's a shortage and we're trying to figure that one out too. We're trying to reassess what we.
So do you see those numbers climb, climbing?
Yeah, I, I, I think they're close pandemic, they are climbing. Yeah, not, I don't think, uh. We're not unusual in that way, but it is a problem that. You know, it is a challenge we are compending with to make sure we're providing appropriate services post pandemic to all the kids who need it in a variety of ways.
Never invested in you would agree that. That support means a more because of COVID. Like I've heard that the lower grades be more behind than the other grades because of COVID.
Right. There is a, there's a challenge of school readiness. Uh, children are just, uh, it's, it's nobody's fault that the pandemic had that impact. So still children are coming in with some more needs than they would have previously and we're doing our best to adjust to that. Um, but yes, that's an additional challenge right now. It is, it adds to the perfect storm that you've been talking about. You know, but the insurance, it hits, you know, transport or things like that, that's. I would say though that, you know, I do want to try to, to support the people that are working for you and the elected committees have done a really good job. Even our transportation contract is lower than some of the other districts that were bargained right now. Um, despite where it is and, and the fact that they moved on it, that also helped, um. It's a very bad year. This is, this is a tough year with what you can, you know, with, with the dynamics driving the budgets. It's just a very bad year.
I'm gonna ask what Katie said, because you don't really give the real answer ever. As long as I've known you, you're gonna laugh. Just need to answer it yes and no. Do you think this budget of three percent increase is good enough for the public school system? Yes or no? I put Brian on the spot, then I put you.
My, my, you know, again, I have recognized that you're, you're trying to do and what you're compending with here as superintendent. It's, it's equivalent to the zero. It has the impacts that I've put on paper already.
That would be.
That answers itself, right? That is an answer in and of itself, but I do not want to take away from the process you're going through. And I do not mean that as any criticism to any person. I think you're fine for working as best you can, all of you with a difficult situation. I would suggest that there was some opportunity to offset it. This would be a year to do that because it's enough. It looks like it's a particularly bad year. You know, but I respect the process, you know.
I only, I'm not trying to really put you on the spot. That is just, as we all know, Katie asks every department that, and most of the departments have been. I think all departments have been really honest. You know, it's the, you know, Chief Patel or the Director of the Library. I mean, they're being honest.
I'm just, I'm just. Everybody wants you to pin it down to a yes or no. We all know that there's gray there. That's not a yes or no, and I totally respect your question. But you're actually trying to get, it's either going to be misrepresented in one direction or the other. If I give you a yes or a no, I'm, you know, I give you the answer that is authentic. That's going to require more your words than a yes or no, because a yes or no is, you know.
Okay.
You know, but I gave you the, the best answer I can under the circumstances. And I'm not trying to be, you know, words nothing. I'm getting to the authentic answer. Which requires more than one word.
I give you a C minus.
That's solid great. See, now we can judge it.
I'm down for that, sorry.
I think that's the new chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. Willitt. I had, I had two other questions. Do we have anyone who has tuitioned into the LEAP program as of yet?
No, it's, it's mostly cost avoidance.
And do we have anyone who's tuitioned into the Town and Business Academy?
No, it wasn't designed at this stage to do that at this time. However, if you look at it, you have about thirty three people in week. If you have everyone out, you know, even ten of them had out placements, you'd be looking at more than a million more than you spend it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one more.
Councilor Khan.
Mr. Pauli. Uh, there was an email about the interest rate. One point, you're making one point six. Something, whatever it is. My only question, I don't know much about it, but my question to you is. Does Town and Town and Board of Education, Board of Education has any surplus sitting somewhere or? Talent saving or whatever it is, is it more appropriate to? Invest into the community, into education rather than putting your saving on one point six?
Do, do we have a surplus anywhere?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of.
In savings some, somewhere that we can use for the Board of Education to support it, support the kids. Rather than using.
Non specifically, I think there's room for conversation in, in places. I think there's room for conversation in all of us, but again, that's being non specific. Lisa, do you have anything to add to that?
I'm, I'm kind of unclear. I'm, is. Sammy, are you asking if there is interest income, like if there's cash that could be invested? And the interest income can be allocated to the Board of Education? Is that what you're?
What I'm asking is if the town has the money. Save somewhere. Uh, invested somewhere and they are, they are making about one point six percent interest or profit or whatever they have. Is there any way you can take that money out and invest into Board of Education like in Town and Town?
That, that's exactly what happens. When we put the budget together, part of the revenue. That is put forth to offset, you know, what the tax increase will be. Includes that investment income. So the entire town benefits from the investment earnings that we receive. That is part of the revenue structure. All, all the other revenues that we collect. Are offset against what the amount we would need left over to have to use for taxes. So those funds are already in the budget to help offset the costs. That are increased on this side. Statutorily, we, we really can't take that revenue and set it directly on the Board of Ed side to spend for certain things. So I think, I think I understand what you're saying.
Because my only thought is like. If the town has some money hidden somewhere or whatever it is, but. I'd like to. Invest it in, in town, then put it away. And then at the same time, I don't want it to put a burden on the. Especially. Out of, adult, like seniors, I don't want to put a burden on them like if any increase in number eight or whatever it is. But there's got to be. There's got to be some more time toward it, so we can talk about it. I'll try to find a solution. Because. I don't want to put Dr. Walt, our Board of Education, under my, under the rug. I do not. I want, I want to support them and especially because of the kids beside that. And I need more, more of you to come out. Come out from the cave. Come out from the closet. Oh, there's somebody.
You're thinking that there's money hidden somewhere? That.
Well, I think, Lisa.
No money hidden.
Going to is the fund balance and probably the tax stabilization fund as alternative sources of savings to. Offset the budget or provide assistance to either the town or Board of Ed's budget. I think that's probably where Counselor Khan is, is going towards.
Okay, because it, it made it sound like, you know, maybe we were hiding money and, and I would never, ever do that. Certainly, the Board of, the, the Town Council does have the option to consider using some of the. Municipal stabilization fund, just as Counselor Luba mentioned, you got to be very careful. For planned use of these things. It's a one time revenue for one time expense. The thing with ARPA will all be explained regarding that because normally I would not recommend. A revenue like ARPA funding insurance costs unless it's what we're hoping is a temporary blip. So to try to ease the burden on the budget is where I was going with that recommendation. And I apologize if it has caused a lot of frustration for all of you, but I think it needs to be discussed. But otherwise, getting back to your question, there's about a hundred and forty five thousand currently in the municipal stabilization fund. Again, you can look at things. If, if there's certain things that are one time type expenditures. That you may want to allocate that for, you can. The, the problem with, you know, adding more revenue. To the budget, you just got to make sure you're not building a base that's going to have to be funded next year without that money. I think we're probably going to be putting in at the end of this year. Probably another. Let's say two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars may be going into the stabilization fund at the end of this year. Depending how the year turns out with unanticipated grant revenue that we receive from the state. So, you know, that may be additional revenue that can be phased in over years. This is a discussion. You know, certainly the council, the manager, myself, whoever you need to discuss ideas, we can run different scenarios. Again, it's just if, if you're adding to the Board of Education budget, you just want to make sure. That it's not a temporary measure with temporary, temporary revenue. You, you want to be able to accomplish things and, 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 and the other side of it is, you know, you're locking yourself in for the future. That's a political decision. If you want to lock yourself in for what you will have to increase it or. At least keep it for a minimum in the future years. That's, you know, that's up to the Town Council to decide.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate the clarification.
Can I make one other clarification too, while I got your ears?
Is it regards to the Board of Ed budget? Not to, not to pigeonhole you, but I want to make sure we move on and I know there's.
No, it's just, it's just about clarifying the tax increase versus the spending increase because I think there's confusion.
No, of course. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to say, the actual tax increase in this budget at this time is two point three two percent based on the town manager's proposal. The spending increases three, four percent. There's a difference between those numbers and it has to do with because of the other revenue sources. That we had as well as the, as well as the growth in the grand list. So I just wanted to make that very clear to everybody, just in case it wasn't understood. The tax increase is a two point three two at this particular point. That's it. I'm done.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it.
Yes, I definitely appreciate that clarification.
Any other questions before we move to?
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, so. What you are asking about specifically, if you use savings dollars or dollars that are in a different one time fund thing to pay ongoing expense. You create a hole in the budget next year and you have to automatically raise those funds again next year. Because you're, you're paying for something that's going to be here this year in the year after. With money that you're not going to have again the next year. So it just creates a bigger hole.
That's why I was trying to understand that. The, the, the money of, of the town money is like if we add up something from, something from outside. To the budget or to Board of Education. Is. I don't want it to be add up to this year and next year because there's no rate and then. And that's the only thing is like, I, this same token is like, I will support the kids. If not support the seniors. Which, which one we should do. And then at the same time, I don't want to tell the, those folks. Hey, you've been living here forty years. Go to, now it's about time to move to South Carolina. I don't want to tell them.
I agree.
They've been here. It's like, I don't know, I don't know which board should I jump in or should I? And that's why my question was to, if we have some money on the side and maybe. We can dump into a Board of Education to make, make him survive.
I think I, I agree with what you're saying, Sammy. And I think the piece of that is, is when you put that money in there for ongoing expenses, you create that hole. And that's part of the problem, right? We have to sit here. We have to, we have to find, like, this is a three percent increase in the Board of Ed. And it's an increase in the tax rate, right? So we're effectively doing exactly what you're saying. We're giving more here, we're asking for more there. That's kind of the role that.
My only, my only, my only thing is, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I'm only troubling is. Million dollar for the insurance and that's basically what, that's what he's getting. What about, what about the increase with the teachers and everything? Everything, everything else comes into that. I know this year has been, last year has been very hard inflation wise, the passing, everything gouging, whatever it is. You're a big guy and you, you're going to feel it. So obviously that the teachers, the staff we have, we have to support them. If not. One to the, uh, four out of, four out of three is going to go. So what should we do? I mean, I think I need more time. On this subject, on this topic rather than anything, anything else. This is, this is, it's important for, for the both sides. So then, and then, anyway, they can, we can come up and. Come from my, or something, something has to be, if you've got them, uh, magic, magical want to.
You're going to the one again, Sammy.
Something has to work.
Where are you running?
One thing to make, make it work. What to do?
No, I think thankfully we do have, and obviously it's not an infinite amount of time, but we don't set the budget to go forward to referendum until next Wednesday. So we do have time to keep having these conversations and.
It is, it is, but if not, if it's not solving anything, you can, you can do it different ten times. It would not make any difference. Seven thousand people is going to make money sooner for me. So like, you know what? Put it out. Back with it.
Every increase is going to be increased to somebody. So it comes down to how much do we want to increase? That's the thing. Unless you put out a flat budget, you're increasing on somebody. So it just comes down to. Who, how much? How much do we want to increase taxes?
I don't know. Again, it's, it's beyond my.
Welcome to the top seat, Sammy.
It's beyond my fault. That's, that's what I can say.
Welcome to the top seat.
Thank you, Counselor Khan. Thank you, Counselor Lou.
Can I, can I just be, yeah, I take Mr. Chair's question. And like I said, seventy six K. Exit possibly a person that I got from Kevin Chambers, seventy six percent versus fifty eight K.
I'm calling up on that BP desk. I'm, I'm waiting for feedback on that, yeah.
All right. Seeing no other questions, we'll move to refuse and recycling. So like.
How can you sell recycling to get revenue?
Worn out. So we kind of went over this the other night. So. Again, the, the budget's changing for two ways. The, this capital account that we were charging. The recycling cost too is, is over, so we have to budget that. And that's like eighty thousand dollars. Plus the one free book we pick up, which we are charging that account, it's, it's being charged to the operating budget now. Plus our, our tonnage is going up slightly. So that's the, yeah, those three together is the hundred and twenty six thousand dollars that's going up. As I mentioned, also next year is the last year of this contract. So. So we're gonna have, having to deal with that as far as what we want to do going forward because prices that are coming out. They're higher than what we're doing now. So it's going to be my Billy's Digger Shot. But that's the, that's the budget. In a nutshell, you know, very short.
I don't think we get any more sticker shot.
Yeah, I know, I.
Thank you, Mike. One quick question in terms of. We've run a, run our fourth one year contract event. And obviously you've mentioned it, for meetings that we're going to be going into renegotiation. How confident are you that we might be able to maintain some of the existing parameters that we currently have? Regarding, you know, charging for residential units listed out on this, on slide twenty four, twenty six, you know? And the, you know, the waiving the fee for one free book we may stick up.
Everything's on the table, you know, I, we haven't sat down with the gentleman from Cassell yet, but we're going to and, you know. But everything's on the table with, you know. They, they talked to you about that at some point about what we want to do related to that. But everything's on the table as much as we can negotiate.
We opened the floor to questions. That's been very in the Council.
Thank you for taking the time to explain this a second time. I appreciate it. Yeah, that's right. Earlier is better. You know, you, you said again, you said before that. In, prices are going to go up next year due to a new budget. This budget's gone up twenty three percent, I think, since fiscal year twenty. Do we have a plan in place to manage and fund rep回收 and recycling services? Like, are we just gonna? Take the increase? Like, is that it? Is that, that's the extent of our plan?
Well, I, I don't, I don't think. We know what the price increase is going to be. It's a state problem. It's a, it's a national problem. It's a world problem. So. You know, we, we get all this. As the state's been doing, they're trying to deal with it on a, a product level. Because we buy all these Amazon boxes and we throw it up and then we have to pay for it to get thrown away. So. thrown away. So, um, we're not, we're not dealing with any, any of the other towns aren't dealing with. So, um, but we'll try to deal with it the best we can. We don't have a transfer station, so we can't do that appropriately. We could do things with that. We have a very, you know, we do everything curbside. So we have limited options as far as what we can do with that. Um, so, um, but we're going to work with our vendor as best we can to get the best deal we can with or going forward if that's what the council wants to do or address other issues or something else. But, you know, we have a limited framework of what we can actually do. Um, if you actually look at the budget going back, we have a really good story. Um, you know, when, uh, the budget was about four hundred thousand dollars more uh, about ten years ago, and then it went down, but now it's kind of climbing back up for a couple reasons. One is the recycling market tank. So it's basically non-existent. So whereas we used to get money for it, now we're paying for it. Um, and that's something that we can really control. That's a, that's a kind of a world issue by recycle. So, um, so, uh, our plan is to try to deal with what we can deal with here and with our vendor as much as we can. Hopefully the state will help with certain laws they may pass that may help. But again, it might be a, a big change for us because as I mentioned on the other, the other night, uh, it may, you know, we may end up having to have, you know, pick up every day with different things. And there's a logic. That's a little big change for people. Um, you know, because as you know, when, when I started here, um, everyone had free bulky waste once a month.
Mm-hmm.
So we went from twelve to ten to six to two. Now we're of one. So, and that wasn't very easy too. So, um, but, you know, uh, there's going to have to be a, a national conversation about what to do with garbage and recycling because if you really look at it, we, you know, we, we pay for recycling now, but the, most of it isn't even go to recycling. It goes into a landfill. I mean, paper and aluminum can be recycled. Everything else usually ends up in the landfill here in another country. So, but, you know, we have to kind of change our metrics on what we really want to recycle and how. But that's, that's a larger conversation.
Thank you. I think, um, Steve, that this is an issue that the council should be taking up one, once we, you know, get past the budget. Uh, it seems to me that, uh, Councilperson Nuccio, uh, mentioned that there are other towns that are, yes, I'm sure we'll hear again. I hope we do. Uh, that there are other towns that are, um, being creative about how they are, uh, addressing waste. I know that you have reported, uh, from Crog uh, that this is an issue, you know, as Mike says, that it's, it's not unique to Tolland. Um, but I appreciate what you, what you said, Mike. And I, I think that, um, when, at the end of the, at the end of all the discussions, perhaps the most impactful thing we can do is, you know, work with the vendors, work with, uh, the parameters that are before us, but uh, I would like to see us as a council not ignore this problem. Um, let's, let's take it up. Let's, let's see what can be done. Um, and maybe we have some sticker shock next year, but to know that we're making some efforts to address this increasing cost would be responsible, I think. Um, Mike, I, I wanted to, to ask you to make sure you, you list all your accomplishments because I found another one. Uh, we, you added the shredding event this year and you didn't include in your accomplishments and you know, you need to, you need to teach your own horn will. So I, I want you to.
No, no, I, I said this earlier. I can't take credit for something I didn't do. That's all Brian and Sarah Beth.
That's entirely Sarah Beth's account.
And I love, yeah.
But it could be added into that.
But Mike could have done it if he wanted it.
Right. I mean, just, you know, like into this section, I think, uh, you know, I know that, uh, our chairperson brought this up too, and I think it's great that we're providing more services to our town. So that's, that's sort of where I'm going there. Um, so thank you for that. Um, and is this proposed budget sufficient for the department meeting? I know. Last one, the fiscal year twenty four.
Well, I'm going to give an honest answer. No, uh, it's yes, but the caveat is, I mentioned last time is we're paying for recycling now. So we're, we're putting in a number of per number. It's fifty dollars. If, if the recycling doesn't get better, we're gonna, that money's going to go away quickly, but we have to pick a number and that's where we are. So, but besides, that's kind of one caveat. But yes, I mean, it's, it's, it's getting by, but like you talked about, it's, there's, there's challenges to this budget going forward.
Okay. But the, the estimate, you, you've estimated out what's predicted.
As best I could. Yeah, as best I could.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. I think, I think the Joe question, Councilor Khan, and I think it was Councilor Nuccio.
Well, I can. Well, if I give you the book. And they shredded it too. And then at the same time, uh, would you be getting money out of that? That's number one. Number two. Question number two for you is, are we in a contract with them?
Uh, well, your first question, we got, uh, we're not getting paid for the shredding. That's just a.
We are, we are in a contract.
No, with the shredding, we're not getting paid. We're not getting money for shredding. We're probably, it's probably you are break even or we're paying a little something for it. So, so we don't get any money for shredding. Um, and the second thing is, are we in a contract? Yes, we're in a contract, uh, but we've been, we've been going on addendums because of the recycling crisis, I guess I would say with a market crash. So we've been doing these one-year addendums to try to deal with that and, and, and on a better basis for the vendor and us. So, so we are in an agreement that ends at the end of next fiscal year, the budget we're looking at now.
It's the, we are in a contract, but they can go up and down wherever.
Well, again, we're on this addendum, so it's kind of, it, yeah, that it's, it can't. Well, all our fees go up in the contract. Obviously we have a contract and fees go up usually in the contract from year to year. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. And just a quick point just before we go to Councilor Nuccio, it looks like a member of the public, right? And you did. So just if you want to mute them in case they.
Okay.
No, it's okay. Just want to make sure they don't, their, their privacy isn't protected.
You're there. Councilor Nuccio. Um, so with renegotiants next year, there's two things that I've, I've mentioned a time or two now that I'd like to kind of make sure we're doing. One is the farm in Coventry that is an anaerobic digester. They are up and running and they are providing, um, electricity to the town in New Britain. Um, and New Britain needs more electricity. Anaerobic diet digesters are a good way for us to look at compost, at look at food waste. Um, in a way that digesters need food waste, um, in order to digest and create electricity. So, energy. So I think, um, if we can reach out to that farm in Coventry, they pay for this compost. It's not something that we just go and drop off to them for free. They pay for it. Um, so that might be something we would have to incur some costs to set up a composting program or something, but also have the ability to create a revenue stream. And it's right over the line. It's literally that farm that's on the main road there. So it's not even that far. If we can contact them to find out what their needs are for anaerobic digester fuel, if we can maybe look at, um, doing something for that, I think it would be good for the town. It would reduce our landfill waste. It's compostable and it would go to the anaerobic digestive. Second, there is a great company, um, in the state just received an award and, um, there's new legislation that should be coming out soon, urban miners, which is creating something called positive. And positive is low carbon concrete. It is done here in the state and it is done using glass. It is almost a hundred percent glass and they are paying for recyclable glass. Um, it is something that can also be used for crumbling foundations. It is shown to be a stronger concrete than the concrete that we have. Um, this company is, um, been recognized nationally and they work, uh, takes a problematic recyclable post-consumer waste glass, the majority of which has been headed to overburdened landfills and creates low carbon solution for concrete actually makes it better. Um, so second stream there, we have a compostable going to anaerobic digesters and all of our glass going to, I want to say it's an it's an N. I don't know if it's the New Britain Canadian or something. I know is.
I want to find anything at least during a quick search in Beacon Falls.
Beacon Falls.
Yeah.
Yes. So there's Beacon Falls. There's another company here in Connecticut, I think that's doing it too, but positive has been recognized nationally. Um, and that is another way in which we can get paid for some of our recyclables. I don't know what kind of program that would take or what they're using to transport, but that is two of our multiple uses of, of recycling. So if we're going out for renegotiation next year, um, I think we should look at how we can sparse out our, our recyclables and find a way parse out. That's the word. Our recyclables to try to get some, um, income coming back in.
Understood. Yeah, those are good recommendations. I'm sure those are. Town Manager Boy can reach out through his counterpart, John Elsasser, and I can touch base with, uh, Chairman Elisa Thomas, to get insight on how they went through that process for the.
I don't know that Coventry has even provided them in stuff. No, I don't think it is. I think right now they're, um, they're, they've worked out some deals with some restaurants and stuff like that, but this is a positive form of recycling that between compostable material and that, just to get, think about the amount of food waste there is. And it's right down the hood.
West Hartford has a pilot, very similar.
They do. They have anaerobic. And I think Ellington is looking at putting in an anaerobic digester also. So we are literally going to be surrounded by places that would like our food garbage. So, um, I don't know when Ellington is supposed to be put in and in up and running, but Coventry's is. And there was a huge article on the amount of electricity that they're supplying to New Britain at reduced costs, I think ever source need for it. So, um, it's an option.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Are there any other questions or comments regarding refuse and recycling?
Make the garbage in.
All right.
Are we going to talk about capital?
I mean, I, I don't think that's technically a part of the, the discussion, but um, certainly there's any comments, obviously, or any questions, absolutely send them out and we can get back to it. But at this point, no, thank you, Councilor. Councilor Murray. So at this point, we're item three, public comment on all department presentations. Uh, since we're having a hybrid format, I'm going to try and bounce back and forth between in-person and online. Uh, if you're online, you can raise hand function or stand nine if you're on a whole device. And if you're up in the public, you can approach the table right here and just to state your name and address for the record. I'm going to start with, uh, online commentary and then jump back and forth for anyone in the public. So, hopefully the first hand up is Kate Vallow.
Uh, Kate Vallow, eighty town green. Um, thank you all for your service and to the town of Tolland and for your time as well. First very quick comment on anaerobic digesters. I was really excited to hear this topic come up. Thank you so much. I wonder about the startup cost for animal proof bins. Um, if that was, if that would be residential as well. So that would be another consideration, but I think it's a really cool idea. Um, I also want to comment on the proposed budget increase for the Board of Education. Um, well, of course, it is not up to the town council to go line by line and have discussions about specific things that will be funded in the Board of Ed budget. Um, it doesn't, of course, absolve the town council from the responsibility to fund quality public education in Tolland. Um, ultimately, it's up to the town council to be fully informed about the impact of the budget decision on services and to adopt a budget that preserves high quality education. For example, when the town council is informed by the Board of Ed that a lower budget could reduce library services in the school, the town manager and town council must consider whether that is acceptable. Is it all right with the town manager and the town council with the town for our students to lose library services? I know that the Board of Ed and Superintendent have been very clear that it's not actually okay with them um, to lose those or to lose a counselor while attending to the very deeds of the students in the week of the pandemic. However, there are simply no other lines to cut for reasons that have already been discussed. Um, it's also important to note that this budget process is not happening in isolation. And as you know, it's important to place the BOE budget and request in context and understand that a higher budget request this year is both reasonable and expected. Um, I respectfully request that the town council members take the town manager up on his offer to view the three percent budget increase as a number that is ceremonial and is a starting place for a conversation. I encourage the town council members to have a serious conversation about what it will take to maintain quality public education services in our town. Take the time. Um, I know there's not much, but I think we could do it. Consider using the stabilization funds for this unusual budget year. Do use them for one-time expenses that make a funding other ongoing expenses possible. Come to a consensus that avoids erosion of these services and then be the advocates for the budget that you adopt. Share the message about why this is necessary. Be leaders to accept nothing less than quality services for the residents in our town, especially in this year of increased economic hardship. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you, Kate. Now I'll open the floor to in-person participation.
Rebecca Risley, one oh three Mountain Spring Road. I've lived here for twenty years, so I'm not new to the process or the history involved. To address Mr. Khan's question, one major reason that Tolland doesn't grow a change is because we have three council members and a town manager that are facing our directional fear and a history of failed referendums. Yes, of course, we can learn from history. They say we not to, but we shouldn't cling to it and live in a shadow. Also, the sentiments that we have great schools unless schools show differently is truly short sighted and shows a lack of understanding for what schools need. Because our staff goes above and beyond and our parents go above and beyond, then you think we should keep, keep squeezing for more. When the true breaking point hits, it's going to take years to repair. And in answer to Ms. Nuccio's question, Ms. Nuccio? I can't help you listening because you only looked at me once. Um, in answer to your question about foreign language about high school, we still do have French and Spanish indeed. Um, in comparison, Ellington, which is one town over, in addition to Spanish and French, also offers Latin, Portuguese and ASL. Just to show, um, a little comparison there as far as some of the things that our town maybe could have, should have. Um, I also reached out by email, which I don't know if uh, any of you have received, but just I'm going to sum up a few points from it. I support the superintendent's original five point nine percent, not five point nine, six percent. It's necessary for an exhaustive number of reasons that I don't have the energy or the time to reiterate. And I know that there are many disconnects in this town with one side clinging to their belief that the residents don't want the chance to vote on a larger increase due to a vocal group of residents and the other side constantly fighting for the opportunity only to be shot down time after time. And now even with a majority bipartisan vote from the BOE, having the requested, needed, asked arbitrarily cut from a five point nine, six to a three percent. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll do it online. Tony? Uh, you're, you're still muted. There you go.
Hi, Tony Mora, forty-two Center Road, avid town volunteer and PTO volunteer. One family income living below the Tolland median. Please assume good intent as I read my letter. I fully understand that it's naive to think there's a possibility that everyone can take off their political hats and see past red and blue. I also understand in other towns, the town manager can arbitrarily cut the BOE budget. The proposal goes directly to the council to keep the process public and transparent. My direct ask of the town council is that you please make this a transparent, public process. If you change it, make your rationale clear for all of us to understand, including the impact on students, including why you feel cutting the proposed BOE budget in half is okay. For full transparency, residents and businesses deserve to know the tax implications on a fully intact BOE budget. Tell me what a five point nine, six budget looks like. Then allow voters to make an informed decision on real, on real tangible numbers. The average Tolland five-year BOE budget increase is one point nineteen percent. The average ten-year is one point five, eight percent. Forbes indicates the average ten-year inflation rate is one point eight, eight percent, which means the BOE budget hasn't even kept up with inflation. This sends a message to students and parents that we don't matter. As a parent and community member, will these potential cuts increase my personal expenses to ensure my kids will receive the services they need and deserve? Will it surpass the proposed tax increase for my home? Remember, I've already stated I'm a one-income family provider living below our town's median income. I can tell the board right now, a tutor will cost me more than the town manager's proposed one hundred and fifty-two dollars a year tax impact. And even that, if that were doubled, the tax impact would still be cheaper than a tutor out of pocket. Please follow a transparent process. Keep the BOE budget proposed, the proposed budget intact and let the people decide a referendum. Keep the BOE budget proposed, the proposed budget intact, and let the people decide a referendum. If you decide to change it, my direct ask for all of you for the sake of all taxpayers is that you do so clearly for all of us to understand. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, though. All right. We'll go back to public guidance.
I want to apologize for earlier, but you hit a nerve and the reason being is every day I show up for my kids and I do what I have to do for them. But I'm asking you to do your parts for my kids and the kids of this community. The impact that Caroline Hargreaves, one eight Trail Street, sorry.
No worries.
The impact of cutting the budget year after year after year leads to reduced programming, the intervention sizes in all of the class size, in all of the grade levels are enormous. Kids are not receiving the services that they need. That's bottom line. Mental health is at an all-time crisis throughout the state. We need more counselors to even begin to tip into what teachers are experiencing and administrators are experiencing from a behavioral standpoint. We're at the point where you've done enough, you've cut away enough, there's no more left to cut. You're destroying the school system. We moved here, other families moved here that I talked to all the time for our children, for the school system, that no longer resembles what I saw in data six years ago when I made the decision to move here. That's on, that's on the town council and that's on the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed needs to come together collaboratively and back the budget that is passed, whether they're in full agreement or not, to the town council. And it's up to you guys to support that budget, to support the superintendent in all of the staff that went into every single decision in every single line item that is in that budget. That's on you. That's your job. So I hope that you consider that because our school system is being dismantled. And that's all. And I apologize again for earlier. Thank you.
No, no, we need to apologize. Thank you. I don't think we have any new residents on Zoom participation, so I'll keep going with Nickerson participation.
Absolutely.
You can if you want.
Karen Moran from Key Merle Way. Um, here to talk about Board of Ed budget, Tucker. Um, but first, thank you for the shredding event. Um, I think I sent it.
Yeah.
Many people, maybe? Yeah. Um, my large garbage bag is ready. Um, just a couple uh reflections on comments. Foreign language at the high school. Um, there are still students that have to take it in college uh, due to scheduling and things like that. So um, a blanket statement like what was said is probably dangerous. Um, a beneficial foreign language uh, program actually would be district-wide and start in lower grades, which we had many, many years ago. Um, history also tells us that our town council and town manager, not necessarily those in this room, um, have never tried to sell the budget to this community. The budget that we need. That's the history I know of from the last twenty years. Um, Mr. John Jones, I think asking the Board of Ed to email you directly seems dangerous. Um, if you would like to have conversations with the Board of Ed about their budget, do so as a group. Have another joint meeting or conversation as a whole, not just individually. Others are losing out on that conversation. This feels like Groundhog Day for many of us that have been in Talon for twenty-plus years. As we continue to question where public education and our schools will be valued as one of our largest assets in this community and why the majority of us settled here. I support the BOE five point nine six, nine two, I saw somewhere two, I don't know, um, increase to be put forth to voters. I'm here tonight, not just as a community member and parent, but in my role as the high school booster club president. I'd like to ask this council and our town manager if you have ideas on how we should fundraise for our schools along with the countless others who are fundraising in this community. I'd like to be prepared to inform our volunteers that we'll be fundraising for copy paper, TMS counselor, the rope program, lead program support, math coach, business teacher, librarian, custodian, and more. This is nothing a bake sale or paint night is going to fix. Our town manager stated that one of the main drivers for reducing the Board of Ed budget was the five-four BOE vote. Offense. If it was a consensus, he would have had a hard time going against it. There is nothing in our charter that says a certain number of votes equates to dollars in the budget. The BOE budget goes directly to the council as part of a public process. Does the town manager know enough about a public education budget to independently make the decision to reduce that budget increase? This not only undermines the process, but negates any hope I had of partnership between our paid town leaders. This process continues to be dysfunctional and broken, and the Talon community will continue to suffer because of it. The facts remain. The Talon BOE budget five-year average is one point one nine percent. The ten-year average is one point five eight percent. The ten-year average for US inflation rate is one point eight eight percent. We have not even kept up with inflation, used the buckets of funds that my taxes have contributed to and weather this storm for the community. In the meantime, we begin fundraising tonight. A carton of copy paper is approximately fifty dollars. That equals seven dollars and fourteen cents per council member. We accept cash, checks, Venmo, or PayPal for your tax deductible donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Still seeing any hands raised on the Zoom screen, so I'll bring it back to. Oh, yeah. Oh, two. Okay, I want, oh, I didn't do so. We'll do KJT, which I assume is Kenny Trice, and then we'll go to Mary Rose Duber.
Good evening. Kenny Trice, fifty-three, Doe Run. First of all, let me just say that I I know that you folks had some spirited conversation here. And I don't think you meant this, but you telegraphed that we can't. I don't think you meant it that way, but as a person sitting here in the audience watching you on stage, what you telegraphed was, we can't do this. We can't do this because the trend said this. Or we can't get this passed because of that. So what you've actually done is you telegraph, we're defeated. You might have, again, you might not have meant that, but that's how it's come across. So my question to you is, what can we do? Already told me what we can't do. So what can we do? My second part is to Dr. Willet. I know, Dr. Willet, you're in a bad situation. Uh, they asked you, is this a valid budget? And of course, you have to answer this in a particular way that, yeah, it is a valid budget. But I'll tell you what the answer should have been. This is my answer. The budget with the cuts presented will cause challenges that we hope to rectify to provide the needed services as realized before. That's the answer. I know, Dr. Willie, you can't say that, but that's what we're doing. So my take here is, I've heard this, and I've had my daughters have gone through the school. I've heard this time, we can't do this. We can't do that. Well, guys, tell me what can we do? What I will tell you is, you're also transmitting to the staff. You know what? We know you guys out there working hard. We appreciate you out there teaching, but you know what? We can't do this. We can't do that. Thank you.
Mary Rose.
Good evening. Mary Rose Duber, she/her, thirty-seven Ryan Road. Mr. Reven, you you gave me a gut punch. You really did. Um, I had other things to say, but I think what I wanted to say is this. You said, doesn't matter what we want or what we need. You said, you don't know how many people even know what's going on. You said hardly anyone pays attention to what we're doing. And you said, I don't see the voters going to give us what we want. Lived here twenty years. I also haven't seen in the town council meeting, the town council members and Board of Ed out there promoting it. It's been said before. If you're, you, we elect you, right? We're electing you to to make these hard decisions and you hire someone to make these hard decisions. And once you've made them, promote it. Promote it. You know, I know I've actively actively promoted voting for the referendum. Support the budget that you come up with, whatever it is that you finally come up with, and I support the the BOE budget as is, whatever it is you come up with. Promote it. Get people out there to vote. If you don't, I'm not even sure why we have a town council or Board of Ed. We just need a town manager and a superintendent of schools. If you're not gonna help the voters to know what's going on and actively through your social circles, no matter what they are. I don't know. I mean, I sing it from the top of my roof and and run out there and tell everybody I know. It breaks my heart that people aren't here. I watch it. I've been watching on Zoom from my pajamas since since the pandemic started. It was awesome. I I just, I just, it it, I want you to promote it. And and honestly, and 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 I I'm sorry I'm gonna bring this up, but last year there was even misinformation sent out. That was a killer. I mean, that to to scare, but I don't, whether intentional or not, it still did a detriment to the the voters out there. So I agree. We all need to get along and maybe more people will pay attention. But but it is a defeatist, definitely the defeatist attitude that we're up here and we hear them, well, no one's gonna pay atten- no one's paying attention. I mean, doesn't matter what we want or what we need. How sad is that? That's wicked sad because it that that we're then we're not getting what we want and what we need. And and we can't even agree what that is anyway, but we're not getting what we want and what we need, and we're not even out there actively promoting it. I know, I know people in this room that have gotten ridiculed for standing out there holding signs that says, you know, vote for the budget. Come on, work together. I love this town. I moved here twenty years ago. I love this town. My child is doing okay. Not perfect. It's not a perfect environment, but he's doing great. So please through your social circles, I'm gonna ask each one of you, if you'll, if you, when you come to an agreement on the budget, promote it, please, each of you, through whatever channels you grab. Don't actively sabotage it. I use that term and I'll stand by that term. There have been people that have sabotaged this budget in the past and recently the Board of Ed budget. Thank you very much.
Mary Rose. Uh, seeing any hands raised on Zoom, so we'll jump back to the public.
Be quick. But I'm a can, she/her, um, sixty-two Crescent Drive. And here is a parent, community member, and active community volunteer. Normally, you will hear me talking about um services, especially as it relates to special education and support as such. But right now, I just have a quick couple of comments. Um, and it's gonna seem redundant because there's obviously a theme here. Um, but first, um, I do appreciate the concerns for those who are in poverty or on a fixed income. If I may make a suggestion, if you're truly concerned about poverty rate, vote for greater and more robust social services and programs at the federal, state level. For the, for that's where these folks really feel the benefit of such. That's what I do. Uh, failure has been mentioned. The failure mode I see is in our message, the narrative of three percent is what it's going to pass, quote unquote. You are setting the bar. When we say a budget is not going to pass, guess what? It's not. You all have the power to flip the script. Find better ways to engage the community in meaningful and productive ways, please. If you truly think we have fantastic schools, then support it financially. And just say it's fantastic, put your money where your mouth is. You can't say it's a fantastic district while knowingly not meeting its needs. We all have an obligation to our community and to help it grow and change. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, continue with in-person participation.
Kate Hamfender, she/her, one oh three Goose Island, Tucker. I'm here to talk about the budget. Board of Ed, uh, although Mr. Polly uh, said the number he proposed for the BOE was ceremonial, I want to kind of push back on that a little bit. Another work that the super and the Board of Ed did was ceremonial, um, have it having halving. The increase ends up with real losses in schools, real losses, um, um, real people's lives are being negatively effective. Uh, it's, it's not ceremonial. Um, I've watched a super in the Board of Ed find innumerable ways to cook costs in the last seven years I've been involved. And I know professionally, personally, educationally, losing librarians, business teachers, intervention, or other certified staff will be disastrous, uh, as I discussed in my email through the TC. As far as the Board of Ed budget goes, the cows been weighed, measured, recategorized, or identified. There's no more places to cut. The Board of Ed has created specialized programs that decrease long-term costs despite um, some of the negative narratives spun by a few folks regarding enrollment transparency as opposed at once. Um, kind of teeing off with Heather's point regarding poverty rates, we know that education is the way out of poverty. And we should not be cutting the Board of Ed budget because that just ends up transferring additional cost to families regardless of their income. I find that the characterization of the increases as a sticker shock is disingenuous. I've been watching this process for years and I've watched uh, previous councils simply choose a low number for a lineage of potential reasons. To Counselor Khan's point, we have not been adequately investing in our town. We have not been adequately investing in our town. Uh, all the new residents that have recently moved into our town expect to have the same quality of services. And we all expect that our homes will continue to retain their value. It is the TC's responsibility to make sure the departments have enough. And once you create the referendum ask, you should be busting your homes to get it to pass. Hmm. Um, what are you going to, when are you gonna fight for a referendum to pass? I haven't seen that yet. Uh, you were hired as a town counselor to make sure the town has what it needs. What are you doing to get people to see that this is what the town needs? If you don't ask for what we need, we don't know what we can get. We cannot rest on the historic successes of the past or count on the fact that our reputation is good enough. Ringing our hands at the problem of low referendum participation is a cop out, my friends. Please do better. I know you can. Um, you are all cared about the town the way that I do. Uh, we just care differently and that's okay. Um, all of our residents deserve the opportunity to fully fund the needs of our community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kate. Any other?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Right. Dana Philbin, eleven Harvest Lane. Um, I'm talking as a Board of Ed member as well as a um, a town resident and taxpayer. I think the big concern that I have with tonight's conversation was that the Board of Ed increase or budget increase is gonna be a tax increase. It doesn't equate equally. Um, I would like, you know, to us to communicate to residents, and I know that there is a calculator online that you can say, you can plug in what a three percent versus a five percent or versus a five point nine two. But the rhetoric that that's coming out that's saying the Board of Ed increase, Board of Ed increase is gonna increase your taxes is erroneous. It's it's destructive to our town and to mislead our constituents and in our town, community members and our neighbors. The reality of it is, is any increase on the town side, which is five percent is the proposed, on the Board of Ed side, which is three percent is the proposed, it's going to be an increase on your taxes, period. What is a three percent versus a five percent on a Board of Ed going to be in someone's wallet? Is it five dollars a month? Is it ten dollars a month? Is it twelve dollars a month? I I would strongly urge our our neighbors and friends to go online and see what that is. Because the reality of it is, a three percent versus a five percent is not that much difference. And I question why a five percent town count, a town budget versus a three percent Board of Ed budget's okay. The reality of it is, our our superintendent has proposed a budget, the town, the Board of Ed um, voted on a budget bipartisan um, and a budget that would fulfill our school system's needs. We are under the median of what the increase has been year over year, over year, over year. The reality of it is, that means cutting personnel, which is personnel in front of our students, in front of our youth, in front of our our youngest impressionable kids that are gonna be educated to get out of that possible poverty that we speak so scared of. So what I would say, and I, and honestly, we really need to fund every single aspect of our community when it comes to our seniors, our schools, our roads, everything. I get that. We need to balance, find out what that balance is. But the scared tactics need to end. The education to our community is paramount. We have parents, we have ex-Board of Ed members, we have townspeople speaking out and saying how education is important. Educate is important. It's important to our kids. It's important to our property values. It's it's our biggest. It's, it's our biggest asset here in town. The reality of it is, your board has done its homework. Your board has asked the superintendent's questions. Your board has had meeting over meeting, over meeting, over pencil sharpening, over paper, talking about postage, everything. We have done our due diligence. The reality of it is, we're coming out of odd years and there are crazy things that we're up against. But we still need to promote education. We still need to support education in our town. Period. And I will just say ditto to all those folks who spoke up tonight. You spoke so eloquently and fighting for your education, for your students, for your children, and for your neighbors' children. I applaud you. I would again, the last thing that I'd like to say is, what scares me, as one town council member said, is people don't know what we do. And you're right. People aren't as involved as we need them to be involved. But it's our job as D T C members, R T C members, town council members. You know, planning and zoning members, Board of Ed members, to educate those folks who who have faith in the decisions that we're making and that are not involved. We, that's scary that people don't know what we do. That is scary. And the fact that we shouldn't submit, be submissive to it, we should be in a proactive mode and educate our people, educate our neighbors, educate our friends. Educate any, whatever social circle, as Mary Rose said. Educate them what's going on in town to help them make a decision. Thank you for what you do. I appreciate what you do. Sometimes something, it's it's a tough job. But I appreciate it, but don't be defeated before the fight has even started. So thank you for your time. I appreciate everybody's conversation this evening.
Thank you, Dana. Back to the public. There's nothing else. We'll go back to online one more time. Once, going twice. That brings up a bio for a German self-interest motion to the jury at, at fourteen PM. So back on the future, is there a second? Well, as I'm saying, I, as the end, see you all on Thursday.